The takeaways that you took from yesterday. So definitely need you to speak in the mic. After you speak in the mic, they will come and clean that mic. Okay? So I, they're looking in the back giving me the thumbs up. So I, cause they have a hard job. They're trying to make sure the sound is right, the powerpoints are right. And then you know how some people are that they wanna give the mic to the next person. Give them the opportunity to clean the mic. So here's how it will look. If you speak on this side, we're gonna get the next person to speak on that side, which gives them time to come over here. So how we're gonna do it is always we're gonna start with our madam chair. And we want to know what your takeaway was from yesterday. Anything that stood out to you from yesterday. We'll start here and then we're gonna get a chance to go to, guess what? Susan, you're next. She gets to go next. And then we gotta make sure we're doing a good pace in reference to what's taking place. So this is person one that's speaking. They're gonna clean this mic. Then once they clean the mic, do you have any idea who's next? It's you. You're so smart. Do you have any idea who might be next? After, well, not next, but you would technically be four. But you know who would be four? Okay, you're, you are just so smart. So here we go. Now I gotta give you a warning. When you answer, you may get a gift. Okay, so what was your takeaway from yesterday?
My takeaway from yesterday was, um, learning to know yourself and others. And how to, some of the things that we need to do to be able to effectively, um, teach our children.
Very good. Know yourself and others. The things that we've got to do to make sure we reach and teach our children. So they're gonna clean that mic. Do you mind sharing? Oh, I'm sorry. Do you mind sharing? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, my takeaway is that we've got a lot of work to do. And the great thing is we have a great team in place that can help us get to where we need to go. And then thirdly, as a board, we have to support these individuals. That's my takeaway.
Great team, support. Great team, support. Awesome. Let's go with the next person.
My two takeaways, uh, were first that there isn't gonna be some overnight cure to what has happened from, from the COVID pandemic to this point. But, uh, more optimistically that we, that gives us an opportunity to come up with some creative solutions to try to combat that issue.
Creative solution? That means that what you may have may not work yesterday, but what you may have may work today. This is so fluent now more than ever. So after that's cleaned, if you'll go here. So what do we have here?
Well, I had two takeaways. The first was to trust the staff and the lead, the leadership. It just reminded me that we need to do that. The principals that spoke yesterday, they're in the buildings. They know the consequences of actions and you know, whether it's athletic director, they know what happens, uh, things. So we just need to trust then the staff and leadership.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, let's pause right there. Two things would happen. If that occurs, you'll probably take 30% of our business, but it's okay. It's okay. But folks, all seriousness, sometimes we can overthink it. For many of us as partial paid volunteers that have sat in principals' roles or those type of things, you're listed as trusted advisors. That's really what you are. Trusted advisors. But for the people that are not speaking yet, this is their livelihood. The good ones. And you have a fair amount. All of them aren't, but you've got a fair amount. In this room, I can vouch for it, cause I know most of these. You've got some really, really good ones. But if you're going to be the trusted advisor, you have to trust them because they're the specialist. Oh, that was good. Because a specialist, you don't wanna go to the podiatrist for your eyes. You just probably don't wanna do that. You don't wanna go to the anesthesiologist for your, well, potentially for your teeth, but not to get them cleaned. It's just some things we need to consider. And I'm sorry, but that was so good. Go to, you, matter of fact, you just saved me 10 minutes, cause I was gonna teach on that and you just did it.
Appreciate that. The second one is, uh...
The ability, the ability to customize education or the experience that the children have. Sometimes we try to make one size fit all. And I think, and especially in this day and time, we have the ability to do that. The example yesterday was, I remember we took, we had some schools on seven period days and some on four by four, but then, you know, years ago, we had to get them all on the same page. And so we, you know, went to four by four. And now we're talking about revisiting hybrids. And I just think whether it's graduation credits or the schedule or whatever, this day and time, we have the ability and we need to be as flexible as we can to meet the individual needs of each student.
That's it. You will now, like never before, have to be flexible. Because the children are coming with you with a different level of circumstances. We didn't talk about mental health much in the, the seventies when I was, not me, but I knew some people that were in school in the seventies. We didn't talk about mental health much. You have mental health now on top of poverty, on top of low social economics, on top of, watch this, we hadn't even gotten into diversity, equity, inclusion, access. We hadn't even started talking about, we hadn't started talking about how are you gonna serve the LGBTQ plus community? We hadn't even got into some of those levels of what I call simplicity, others may call complexity. You're like, well, how do you call that simple? A child is a child that's a child that's a child. A parent is a parent that's a parent that's a parent. Regardless of if you got money, baby, or you got love, either way it goes. Love to hear from you. Then we're gonna pass it to Mike here. So what do you have?
One of the things that, um, yesterday really had me thinking was the very first thing you asked us to do was, you know, what do we wanna gain? And when I look at that, I think, you know, what do we want to accomplish here in Cumberland County in which I think our strategic plan has been, um, the start of it. But what are we willing to do to make it happen? And I think that's something that we all need to look down deep into, you know, what are we willing to do? The second thing, and I think this goes along with what we're willing to do, is we really need to learn to listen to those, as you said, the, the ones that, um, are in the trenches. The, from Dr. Conley on down to, uh, whether it's a teacher, custodian, whoever it is, I think we need to learn to listen, um, because we, some of us have walked in some of those shoes, but some of us have not. And, um, it, it's very difficult to understand what's being done or asked for, um, without really listening to what it is.
Girl, that was so good. We gotta take a selfie. I hope the people that's streaming can see this. That was good. Put your arm around me like you like it. There you go. Beautiful. I don't know what you all ate. I don't know how you rested, but if not, let me be clear. Don't say this little fancy conversation, cause you got this national traitor in town. This is what you mean. And we're streaming. We're not accountable to this room. We're accountable to the citizens that we serve. This sounds good. I like it. What I love is we execute what I like. That's what I love. Can't wait to hear yours. Charles, give me something, give me something.
Okay, what I took away from yesterday's, uh, interactions was that, uh, we can be one team, but it's not going to be as easy as we would like for it to be. Traditions are difficult to break. And things are easier said than done.
Charles, you don't drop the mic like that? And then, and then, and look, Dr. Conley, he gonna look at me like, I know that was good. Yeah, it was good, Charles. I mean, I can't even say that. Yeah. Yeah, that was it. Traditions are difficult to break. I'll give you one real quick. In the nineteen, um, or 2001, the Griffins hold a traditional family reunion. Oh, it's big. We cooking everything, Dr. Black. Unfortunately, it typically doesn't start on time. So I know it's not gonna start on time. I don't go until I think the food is ready. But both of my grandparents were there at that time. And my dad's grandmother, or my dad's mother, came from a very, very diverse experience. She cleaned floors for a lady by the name of Miss Jessie. Miss Jessie showed her how to read, how to write. My grandmother actually went to community college and my grandfather graduated from Elizabeth City State. Didn't even know this. On my mom's side, nothing wrong, more laborers, more industrial furniture factory. That was just kinda how it was. So my dad's, and you know, the, the older lady was just sitting there, cause in, in my family, we let the seniors go eat first. And they don't really have to go eat. We bring the food to them. But on my mom's side, my grandmother wanted to go see what was on the menu. My dad's mom was fine with it coming. This was, I think, I think it was like 2000, 2001. And it looked pretty much 95%, 98% African American. 2008. Oh, this was good. It changed. President Obama had become president. Our family had started growing and watch this blending. So my dad's mom said, oh my goodness, you're really gonna love this. This is not, um, the sentiments of Kingston Griffin. This is an example of what my grandmother stated. I believe this is what heaven is gonna look like. It was just a blend of everybody. My mom's mom, she said, well, I can't believe them boys are now dating those girls. The babies are pretty, but they don't understand the complications they gonna have to go through. My dad's mom said, Ray, she said, if you gonna go to heaven, you gonna have to change the way you think about this. She said, now you talk about everybody else. She said, you know, that is racist. Now I'm just sitting back, cause of, you know, as a trainer, I'm stealing from, excuse me, I am strategically borrowing from every environment I can get something from. So I'm sitting there watching these two senior leaders just talk. Before you know it, my dad's mom had my mom's mom in tears because she called her out. But by calling her out, she called her in. It is okay for you to disagree, but in the moment of disagreement, you still have to hear each other and call each other in and not focus on calling each other out. What my dad's mom did is change how my grandmother on my mom's side was looking at race. But my grandmother on my dad's side had a different experience about race. See, some of our experiences, cause some of you been on the board a long time, oh, this is good. This is not even in my notes. Some of us are suffering from board member PTSD. We just can't let certain things go. If you're really gonna have a comeback, measure the past but tread toward the future. I didn't say, you know, throw it away, cause there's some lessons learned there. But as you learn the lesson, you've got to move forward. Did I make sure that every board member spoke? Did every board member get a chance to speak? You didn't get a chance to speak? How you get a gift and didn't get a chance to speak yet? I got you covered and I got you covered. Golly, I was showing pheromones to newbie. Golly. All right. So yes, ma'am. What do you have?
Okay, what I put down was, um, you need supporting documents in order to make a decision that affects all children. So you need the facts. And also whether you're a teacher, supportive staff, school board member, et cetera, you sometimes have to think outside the box in order to get the results that you're looking for. Holding on to, quote, "That's the way we have always done it" does not cut it. Be able to welcome new ideas.
Awesome, awesome, awesome. So they'll take that. Good job in that aspect. I do wanna get a little feedback. What did you learn from the personality test last night? Oh, that was good. The ladies, they cornered me at, at one table. I mean, Donna was like, I got a question. I liked it, but the bottom part, it was tough. Not only was it tough, she said, I ain't like some of that stuff. Then Susan said, shoot, I skipped it. I ain't want nobody know I'm bossing. But I say all that to say, give me some feedback. What did you learn from that, uh, assessment? Um, we'll start over on this side and just someone real quick. Now let me share it with you. The reason sometimes meetings last longer is transitions take longer. The quicker we transition, I'm not trying to rush your meeting, but as a true facilitator, my goal is to make sure I keep us on time. So Nick, what, what was something that you took away from the, the assessment?
I was actually pretty even across the board. And I, I guess I realized that I, uh, I don't know, I'm pretty, I don't know what the takeaway from that is, but, uh...
So you're even across the board?
Yeah, I don't know.
The big thing I want all of us to take away is to be able to see where other people were. All of my As stand up real quick. Just stand up real quick. Stand up real quick. All of my As. I'll give you a hint. It was only one.
That was just David.
Okay, it was one A. Okay. So remember the A was the personality. And it's inside the book. Your turning point starts now. I've already given Dr. Conley a copy of it and signed it. If you want one, we'll figure it out. Um, but the A personality was more outgoing. B's stand up real quick. Stand up, Bs. They just wanted the bottom line. Bs, do me a favor. Read this on the count of three. One, two, three. I have never been a, a B group that could read it together. Never met one. Bs, you can have a seat. Watch this. Cs, stand up for me. Watch the, none of this is bad, but watch what happens. Cs, if you don't mind, read that for me. They didn't read it together. They figured out how to blend or not say anything at all. But the Bs, you gonna make sure, true leaders strive sometimes, and it was all over the place. None of it's bad. I just want you to be aware. D's, stand for me real quick. Stand real quick, D's. Now it's gonna cheat a little bit. Just happened to be their signage. D's, read that for me.
True leadership stems from individuality and is honestly and sometimes imperfectly expressed. Leaders should strive for authenticity over perfection.
Now, as crazy as this sounds, 95% of the time, the D's are the only group that can read it. Because I didn't put any parameters that said you couldn't get together. See, sometimes as board members, as leaders, educators, we put parameters that don't exist. The A wasn't here, but typically what happens with the As, the As would've got on stage and gave you a dramatic presentation. True leaders stem toward individual honesty, boys and girls. That's what the As would do. Bs, not the person, but the personality, you just wanna make sure it was ready and you were heard. Cs, some Cs just didn't wanna be wrong. D's, you were like, man, this is a time that we can hug. Let's read it and let's get it through. But true leadership stems from individuals that can honestly, sometimes imperfectly express. Leaders should strive towards their authenticity over perfection. You gotta make sure that when you're looking at this from a, uh, perfect standpoint, it's not a lot, it's perfect. Okay? But we can get better instead of getting bitter. So when we look at this, don't forget our purpose. Best practice, highly effective board and team. If you're gonna be a highly effective board, I'd encourage you to take a picture of this. Take a picture of this. These are seven. Take a picture of these. Seven, seven, seven. Take a picture of these. Take a picture of these. What are the expectations? For those that are streaming with us and have joined us online, thank you for joining us. But not only is this for a board, this could be for your personal life. What are your goals? November and December, people are gonna start setting New Year's resol- excuse me, New Year's resolutions. You've gotta start setting your goals, but you already have goals. What we need today is your feedback on the direction that we're going. Don't let the little things become the big things. The little ones, these are talking about highly effective boards, the little ones will take you out. If we're gonna strive to achieve the things that we have to achieve, we have to continue to have professional development. If you remember what I said yesterday, this is not a one and done with us. Remember I started out saying, hey, if you like it, great. If you don't like it, I'm still coming back. Listen, tell me I can't. But my whole point is you have to continue to do this. It feels good right now. We have some momentum. The staff did an excellent job last night, but we still need your feedback. The key to this is, is it has to be sustainable. You're never gonna be done. Take advantage of training and development opportunities. Ensure availability. Work together as a collective. As Marissa and Madison were putting together your data and analytics last night, it was interesting to me, uh, some of the things that you had written down. And when you start talking about the things that you had written down, um, it, it, it's one of the ones that really blew me away. And I'll read a few of those of what you said you would like to gain. As a matter of fact, I'll shift it a little bit. If you don't mind, well, I'll do it this way, cause it'll be too much back and forth. But here's some of the things that you said that you'd like to gain. A simple approach for problem solving. It's not Kingston Griffin. That's what one of you all said. Now remember, this was staff and board. This just wasn't the, the board. Unity. To unify, that must mean we were not unified. Not Kingston Griffin. I'm just reading. Strategies that are evidence-based. Better teamwork. Build working relationships. This person, you impressed me the most, so go ahead and smile, but don't let everybody know it was you. You said effective communication and you gave two examples of what that means. That's the, I could go do, uh, what I call just traditional trainings on communication and people never ever know the difference, cause everybody says that's what they want. But this person said effective communication. And here's what they said around effective communication. Being able to hear, listen, and execute. Oh, that was good. Hear, that's part of communication. Listen, that's a part of communication. Execute, that's a part of communication. That person also said, in order to be effective in communication, once we settle on it, we need to communicate it as one. Remember, I was just taking pictures. That's all I did. I took pictures. Probably saying, who wrote that? I don't know. It was good. Um, collective purpose, focus on our goals. Better understanding of the county initiatives. What would you like to gain? Insight of roles and yourself. Remember that personality test told you a little bit about yourself. Strategies to come back and not go back. Oh, that was good. To come back and not go back. Uh, tips and tools for advice to support all children. What are you willing to give? This is what you said. Set an open mind, new energy, time, effort, sacrifice, honesty, good, loose, listening, uh, true, blend and not all. Now this is what you said. Blend and bend. I'm gonna use that. That was good. Means you're wanting to blend, but bend meaning, my interpretation, is you understand you gotta give to get. One person put, it was funny, you wrote a big A, so it might've been a former principal or teacher or somebody. I don't know. I'm just asking. Or I'm just saying. You put anything to help children. Anything. If it wasn't, yeah, I'm not saying who it was. But those are some key strategies when you begin to look at what you're looking to, uh, say you're willing to give and you're willing to gain. And when you start looking at willing to give and willing to gain, you've looked at these seven principles to be a highly effective board. But as you see these principles to be a highly effective board, you've gotta start looking at, well, what does this mean and how will we get there? Real quick at your table with your table partner. The question now becomes, so if we say we're gonna be a highly effective board, how do we do it? Knock something that's on the screen. How do you do it? You got five minutes. If you don't mind joining that table, you got five minutes. Okay? Five minutes. Five minutes. So you got three, I got two, I got two. You got five minutes and, and staff definitely join up. But how do you become? Like what are you really gonna do to be a highly effective board? You got five minutes. Okay, let's go, let's go, let's go. You got five minutes. Staff, you guys can talk to each other about it. Also, I wanna thank the tech and support staff again. You're doing an awesome job. Staff, definitely get together. In your case, how do we be more effective as a team? Board, how do you be more effective as a board? All right. Question number two. This is the time for us to really think, evaluate, inspect what you expect. In our meetings, so this will be at your executive cabinet level, this will be in your board meeting, open or closed sessions, what should you stop doing or maybe evaluate not doing any longer? Oh, this is good. What should you stop doing or evaluate not to do any longer? For example, some people, um, have consent agendas and they're expecting the adults to read the minutes beforehand, so you can move through that. I have said in other meetings, they read the entire minutes from the previous meeting. So if you were in there three hours, they read it all. I have said in other meetings, they read the entire minutes from the previous meeting. So if you went at three hours, they read it all. What should you stop or consider maybe not doing any longer? That's your second question. Go ahead and jump in that. You got five minutes on that. That's a good one. That's a good one. Okay. So I have learned that if I don't keep this fluid, it doesn't work. So staff, do me a favor. I have two over here, two right here, and two right here. If the six of you over here would come over here, this is gonna be great. This is gonna be great. Because here's what trainers do. They let you report out and everybody talk about it, and then they lose control of the meeting. No, you gonna talk over here and you figure it out over here, and guess what? This is gonna be great. One, two, three, four, five. And normally, I would never have the ladies move, but we're getting some cardio in this morning. If you would come over here with these very handsome, attractive, deviant, loo- look at Charles. Charles, I'm like, yeah. I don't like what he said, but he called me handsome. Come over here, and now I want you to discuss what you were discussing. Oh, that was good. Discuss what you were discussing. Now, Dr. uh, Stacy Women over, plea- or, or Wilson over, please state the part that you were talking when I came over here, and, and Dr. Conley, what you have circled. At some point in time, you have got to make sure that gets out in this process. Because if that occurs, and somebody managed the, the operational component, watched this, and not mess, there's a difference between managing and messing. Because if you tell me to do the job, and then I don't do the job, that's called accountability. If you tell me to do the job and I cannot do the job, that could be a lack of training, coaching, and development. But if there are some people that are great at, oh my goodness, they are so nice, but nice still doesn't execute outcomes. At some point in time, you're gonna have to figure out, is he, is she? And I know that daddy's, mama's, cousin, niece's nephew got their name on the building. But this is about children in 2021 coming out of a pandemic. It's a different world when my, my uncle, he's got his name on the building. You know, I don't even know this uncle. And people are, oh, the legacy. And for what I know about him, to be honest? So I don't know if that's good to, to, for how I live, that that's a good thing. So please, please, please talk. Now, on this one, you actually have seven minutes, because we're slightly ahead of schedule, but I've learned that if I give people ten, if I tell you seven and give you ten, I'm ahead. If I give you ten, you take twelve. You got seven. Now.
I worry more, not about the rest.
Board members from the Second Pentecostal Southern Methodist Southern Catholic, everybody. I got a purse from black, I got glasses from red, I got a shaft. Oh, Lord, this is live streaming. So let me give you your stuff. So here's what happens in most cases. The board, she said, don't take my, the board, I can tell you now, if you execute, uh, first of all, Dr. Black, you don't have to work out. This is probably twenty-five pounds or something. You don't ever have to work out again in your life. Like, I got shoulder dis- Like, I got shoulder displacement right now from carrying your purse. But, but board members, please make sure. That you really hold on to this rich conversation. The rest of the day is going to be good, but if you hold on to what you just did. You'll be where you need to be. As a matter of fact, the retreat's not over, but if you hold on to those seven minutes. You've had more success than previous environments. You gotta hold on to it. Staff, we're gonna take a little bit more time to unpack this at. I can already see, uh, next week, I'm gonna have seven conference calls with Dr. Wilson Norman about, you know, how we make this work. But I do have some ideas, but what I want to do is learn more before I impart what I think may happen. But probably most consultants, they start trying to tell you and don't know enough information about you. That's a tweetable moment. They try to tell you, but don't know enough information about you. So what you all were just discussing, is that a person? Is that a department? Is that three people? Is that six people? Who's doing it well? There's somebody in that analytical situation that you all just talked about, that you got a team member that's doing it well. And if they are, how are they doing it well? What I've learned is sometimes, some people are just that good, or sometimes it could be how you're doing it. But Dr. Conley said it best, you cannot be a cabinet dealing with operational stuff at this level. Because by the time you get out, you are worn out. So I know what most people are expecting, but we want to hear what they said, and we want to hear what they said. This is very professional, mind your business. You need to execute what you talked about, you gotta execute what you talked about. It's almost like the huddle. That's what we call these, we call them huddles. So next up, and remember, I'm gonna be helping us facilitate and get through things today. Um, next up, we are. Wow. We, is that right? Is it ten o'clock? Okay, we're fifteen minutes, and I'm rushing us. Alright, Kiston Griffin. Next, we're gonna talk about, um, our strategic plan. Now, listen, being ahead of schedule does not mean you talk longer. Let me say it on this side, because I know this side is long-winded. I'm not calling any names. I'm not calling any names. I am not calling any names. I will never call a name, but I know the other part of Ron, and it's called Don. He told me everything last night at nine seventeen. So, um, we're gonna. Oh, let me ask you, do we need to take our break now? Do we need to take a break, or can we keep moving? Break, raise your hand. Alright, so we're gonna keep moving. I want to talk about, um, a little bit about the strategic, not me, so let me be real clear. I'm not talking about. But we're gonna talk about strategic planning, uh, facilities and student assignments. In between that, we may take a, a little bit of break, so, uh, Joe and Mark, they're up, and if they need to get the slides shifted for them, which I don't think they do. Um, perfect. Um, so I want to make sure, what we're gonna do is we're gonna switch microphones. I know this group loves me. I've done this so much now, it's almost like you're part of the presentation. Matter of fact, what's your name, sir? Henry, what's your name? So Henry and Angie, do me a favor, give them a big round of applause. They are working, working, working. So, uh, let's get started in the strategic planning for facilities and student assignments. As we begin to do that, we may get into choice programs and language, but if not, from there, that may be the opportunity for us to take a break. Uh, from a standpoint of the temperature in the room, for those that were wondering, it is on an automatic system, so there's not a lot that we can do. However, if you do get cool, I did bring one jacket that we can throw over somebody. It was the one I had yesterday. If you need to get up, walk around, do whatever you need to do, but I need to grind your body in the room, so I don't need you to be frozen. So everybody point at Joe real quick, point at, point at him real quick, point at Joe and say, you got this. Alright, let's go.
Alright, good morning, everyone. Um. There, I would be in, we're running early. I would be introducing a couple of other people. They will show up. Uh, they, I don't necessarily need them here for this part of it, they're more here for the, uh, student assignment part of it, but I, so I'll go ahead and get started. Um. As you've heard in the discussion so far, there are a lot of things going on out there, and there are a lot of distractions out there that affect our teachers and our students when it comes to learning. One of those distractions we would prefer not be there is the facility. But unfortunately, we do have a lot of needs in our facilities here in Cumberland County Schools. I've been in front of staff, been in front of you a couple of times before. We've talked about a process that we wanted to go through to take a look at those needs and identify those needs. Um, been to you a couple of times, as I said. Now I want to bring you what's forming into what could be a five-year plan for the district and some potential next steps. But I do want to kind of go back and cover a couple of things that I've covered with you before also. But first of all, with any five-year capital improvement plan, I know the first two things that everybody tends to look at. One is the name of the schools that are on the list, and two, how much it all costs. Well, today, I want you to not pay that much attention to that, okay? There are names up there, and there are costs up there, but I really want you to focus more on the process that we went through to get to this, because that's the important part of this, is how we identified this need. Because when we go out there and we want to try to get funding for it, everybody needs to believe in that process, okay? So. As I've told you before, what we wanted to do was first of all, assess the needs out there in our schools. And what we did was we identified over forty-three systems in the schools in different, nine different categories, uh, to go out and evaluate. We actually evaluated those systems in every school facility in the district. We collected that information, and the bottom line was, we wanted to identify the replacement dates for every one of those systems. We identified twelve thousand, three hundred and ninety systems within the district. And out of those twelve thousand, three hundred and ninety, sixty percent of them have already reached their recommended life, or will reach their recommended life by twenty sixteen. Sixty percent of our systems are already at the end of their life. That equates to about two hundred and fifty million dollars worth of systems that need to be replaced. And when we did this analysis and we looked at all the different systems, we were able to come up with what, if you were to wipe it clean and say everything was new today. What would be the annual amount we would need to invest in our systems in order to keep them up to speed? Would be right around twenty-five million dollars a year, just for individual systems. Now, this is not changing the layout of the school or anything like this. This is just changing the air conditioner, or changing the carpet, or painting, okay? So now you've got this large need, how do you figure out where you target your first money that you do get? So we talked about this before too. This is how we look at priorities. First, we look at the facility condition index, and what is that? That's basically a little ratio that is done that identifies all the lifecycle needs that we just talked about. For a building, for a school, and then we divide that by the replacement cost for the school. This gives you a ratio. This allows us to compare an elementary school to a high school. Alright? Because if you look just at the total amount of money due, a high school would always be the highest one, because it, it's just bigger. This gives you a ratio, you can compare schools, and you can start to target them for which ones need to be looked at first. But sometimes, you know, facility condition is not the only thing out there that is still facility-related that could be worked on. So what you also see on here is a factor called utilization, which talks about doing something at the schools that are under-enrolled. That might improve that enrollment, bring other students into it, attract other students, if I at least, to those schools. Or the over-enrolled schools, which may need additional classroom space, or another school in that area. So those two factors are included in this too, to bring some prioritization to that part of the, the area. And then, what can be done to schools to help with the performance, the learning that's going on in the school? So what we wanted to do was tag, target those schools based on the performance composite for those schools. I will mention to you right now, what we did for this prioritization is we continue to use the, the performance composite numbers that were pre-pandemic. Uh, because the numbers were all over the place, and we really didn't even have numbers for one year, so we've used those for this. So we take that as a way to prioritize our schools. We've got all these needs, now we want to try to target and narrow that list of first stuff we want to look at. When we put all that together, you end up with this thing, it's hard to see, of course, up there, it's also in your, in your book. But basically, and I don't have the list of every school, but we've got every school in the district ranked, alright? Using these factors. Then it starts up there, as you see, sunny side comes in as the top one, based on these rankings. The colors just kind of give you an idea of what they, how they rank within that particular area by itself. So you can see how some, some green items, like Stedman Primary there. Comes in higher, because its FCI ranking is, is real high, but something lower comes in on the FCI ranking will come in higher, because now. Well, I'll pick TC Barron, but they're higher on the performance ranking. So this helps, it shows you how the mixture helps combine those different factors together. Now, we've got this ranking. What do we do next? Well, we need to figure out which ones out of this, how many we can do per year. And the approach that we took is, if you remember in our assumptions, we said that schools should be on a forty-year renewal cycle. We have about eight million square feet in the district. If you divide that by forty, you would basically be touching about two hundred and five thousand square feet of facilities every year to be renovated in order to stay even. Keep up with your facilities and stay on that forty-year cycle. So using that. We start targeting two hundred and five, two hundred thousand square feet each year to look at, to be renovated. And over here to the far right, you see the square footage for each school as we go down. And then you see a cumulative, and so what I was, what we did was we added up square footage until we got to two hundred thousand, and we said, okay. These schools are the ones we want to do in the first year. And then we go another two thou, two hundred thousand to get to the next year, and we went through that. And this identified and narrowed the list down to seventeen schools that would fit into the five-year period that we're talking about having a plan for, a multi-year plan. And just a reminder, not only have we come to you and talked about this, but we've been talking to the county staff at the same time, also our counterparts at the county staff about this process. So now we've narrowed the list down to, to seventeen schools. I will point out here a couple of things. One, you will notice a couple of these are blank when it comes to square footage. One is Lily and Black, and one is TC Barron. Well, you know TC Barron, we're already in the process of going through the closing actions on that school. Lily and Black, we skipped here because we're looking at some other options there, and if you remember in our previous retreat, the last time we got together and we talked about assignments and stuff. There was a discussion about moving the kids out of Lily and Black. So that's why we skipped it at this time for this presentation, and it's not included in the numbers. So now we narrowed it down to seventeen, we need to add another layer of detail to these projects. What we've done is only done lifecycle, identified the end of life for the life cycles. But that is system-oriented, that is not facility-oriented. Alright? So it doesn't include other things that would be involved. Um. What we would do, if we could, in the best situation, is that we would have a consultant come on board and do a master plan for every one of these schools, and really identify all the other needs. The space issues, the storage issues, the academic issues, the, the, the classrooms that are too small, not enough for the consultant. Uh-oh. I'm sorry, what? Oh, no problem. It would be nice to have a master plan, like I said, for each one of these. But we, we're unable to do that for every school, but there is a way to approach it and get to another layer of detail for each one of these schools. There is a cost model that is being used out there, that has been tested, been used, and it's based off of two billion dollars worth of construction projects, okay? It's a way to take a look at your schools at a high level and provide another level of detail when it comes to the cost and the needs for that school. And I'm gonna give you a quick look at it. I know this is a, it's a long spreadsheet, it's a lot of detail, but I think it's information you need to know upfront, that this is the kind of data that's going into this to make these kind of decisions. And so I'll use an example here, and the example will be WHOON. And first of all, we start up here at the top. What we call minor, moderate, and major. These are square, this is square footage. And so a team went to every one of these seventeen schools and walked through them, and made an assessment of the schools based on the type of work we would expect to do in the schools. It could be minor work, which is basically the finishes, painting, carpet, that type of stuff. That's the square footage in this school that we felt like only needed minor work. Then we took a look at the square footage that we thought needed moderate work, which now we're probably changing out ceiling tiles, uh, maybe some floor tile, uh, floor tiles. Or some mechanical equipment, but it's only the equipment right there in the room. In other words, there's a HVAC unit in the room, we would just change it out and put a new one in there, okay? And then there's square footage that we call major. You're to the point now, you're almost gutting that area, you're, you're tearing everything out, and you're starting over. Or if it's a mechanical system, you're changing from an old window system to now a central unit system for the whole building. So now you're running new lines throughout the entire building. So we would call that a major renovation. So we identified the square footage for each one of those areas. We also look at any time the square footage that needs to be added. Uh, in this case, it's adding some additional square footage to the cafeteria area. There is a cost for new square footage we got from DPI to put towards that. Some of these are multipurpose rooms are being added, some of them, some classrooms are being added. It just depends on the project. Then right here, we have two hundred and fifty dollars, that's the cost that DPI is showing for a new school, cost per square foot. And that factor plays into some of the calculations that will come up next. So now there's several lines of different types of, of costs that would be applied to a renovation of a project. If you're gonna go in and do some renovation, there's usually some kind of demolition that goes with it. And what we've learned over time is, based on whether it's a minor, moderate, or major, or complete, which means it's, you're totally tearing down the building. There is an average cost to do this work, to do that demolition. So we use that factor, times the square footage up here, and we get a number. The renovation itself. We have learned that thirty percent of a new cost is usually what is spent to do minor. Fifty percent of a new cost is what it takes to do the moderate work, and seventy percent of a new cost to do the major work. So this all gives you additional factors. You've got your new square footage based on this cost and the square footage, and now you've got a total construction cost estimated for this project. Based on these, what's, what's been learned over time, based on whether it's minor, moderate, or major. Site down here at the bottom, you won't see anything there, that's because we'll take care of that at the end, I'll talk about it. Next, you got the phasing. Some of the work requires phasing, and it depends on the complexity of that phasing. There's a factor for that, it costs something. Complexity of the project. The size of the project. If it's minor work, it tends to cost you more than if it's a large project, because you've got quantity, and you can reduce the cost. So there's a factor for that. If there's asbestos already known in the building, we've got an estimate for it. Lead paint, that's usually based on whether it's moderate or major, you gotta go in there and, and, uh, take care of the lead paint in a building. And then there's a design cost, and usually for renovation, it tends to run closer to eight percent, where a new design would be six percent. So those factors are all applied against that cost earlier, you saw the estimated total construction cost for the project. It goes on. There's contingency, you always have contingency for a renovation project, because there's always a surprise when you go into that building that you didn't expect. There's a soft cost, those are all surveying and, and advertising. There's a soft cost. Those are all surveying and, and advertising and marketing and, um, survey and different material testing. Those costs are involved in this. If you're going to go work in a school that's got students in it, you're going to have to move people around. There's a cost factor for that. You're going to need swing space potentially to move them to. So we've tried to estimate that. And then if you're going to go in and do a renovation to a school, you want to take care of the furniture and the equipment in the school also. So there's going to be a certain amount of that that is replaced with the school. There's child nutrition services equipment that needs to be replaced. Technology, we usually didn't put a cost here because frankly, technology changes so quickly. And the philosophy behind it changed so quickly, that would be something we'll have to decide on when we're closer to a final project. And then down here at the bottom is life cycle. That is all the work that really isn't included in the stuff you saw up above. It includes the site work. And you see here, the most common categories are playgrounds, roofing, et cetera. And you end up with a total for the project. In this case, almost twelve and a half million dollars for the renovation of Owen. So this is how we go about putting together a high-level estimate. And we've found over time with this cost model, these estimates work pretty good when it comes down to the final project. So now, we've got seventeen schools. And we've put them into a plan. That plan is based on the priorities you saw earlier and the fact that we're trying to touch about two hundred thousand square foot per year. And so it lays out this way. Over a five-year period, the first year, you're pretty much going to spend money on design dollars. Then you start doing the construction of your first few schools. And then you ne, also that second year, you're starting to design for your next set, and that continues on down. And you see roughly each year, the amount of money that would be needed to take care of the square footage that's been identified. You add a program contingency, you add a program management fee in order to take care of all this work. And then down here in the bottom, this is what we do now. This is all that's really been going on now. This is what's been done with the sales tax. You hear the projects we do yearly. We've been roughly spending, um, right around nine million dollars a year for capital improvement projects, for facilities, another four and a half million for furniture and equipment, and about four hundred thousand for vehicles. What we've done, what I've done here is reflected, you now see, this is thirteen million. If you remember earlier, I told you that when we did the analysis, the cost is about twenty-five million a year for, for life cycle replacement in order to stay even. This thirteen reflects the fact that about twelve million of it will be taken care of up here in these major projects. If you're doing major projects, you're taking care of some of the life cycle. So we removed that off of there, and you now you have about an annual amount that's getting around to be about fourteen million. These costs are inflated at two percent per year to go on out to the outer years. Bottom line, when you get down here, you're looking at a five-year program that is right around four hundred and forty million dollars. And once you get past that first year, you're averaging somewhere in the ninety to a hundred million dollars a year in order to take care of your, your facilities. This plan touches about seventeen schools in the five-year period. Now, here's something, this is just the first look at the plan. And we started to notice some things here, and I'll point out, for example, you look here, JW Coon, over twenty million, and then you look at, uh, Sherwood Park, another eighteen, nineteen million. We're looking at, for those two schools, about thirty-nine million dollars worth of work that has been identified. You know those two schools are right down the road from each other, and they're small. And when you look at the membership of those schools, and you look at what in our assumptions, that a standard school that we would want for an elementary of seven hundred students, all the students in those two schools could fit into one new school. So it makes you ask, should we spend all this money on this? What are we going to get with that money? That money's going to give us new equipment, nice efficient equipment. It's going to make the school look good. But you're going to have a lot of the same restrictions that you've always had with that school. Alright, you have some space standards, you've got the restrictions of the way it was built, the same security issues. If there's, you know, all the rooms are open up to outside or something like that. So there's some things you can't change in this renovation plan. And you're not going to have a twenty-first century learning environment. So the next question is, is this the only combination example, or are there others? And we took a look at that. But first, like I said, those two schools together was thirty-nine million dollars. What does a new school cost? If you go to DPI standards and our assumptions, you see here that a new elementary school will cost around thirty-four million dollars. We're talking about spending thirty-nine million dollars on those two schools. And then there's a middle and a cost for a high. So staff took a look at how many different areas we could potentially combine some schools. And what is the benefit of combining some small schools? Well, if you combine small schools, you can reduce the personnel and operating costs. You now have one principal instead of two. You have one set of cafeteria staff instead of two, alright, serving the same number of kids. For small schools, there are costs to run and operate that school that don't meet the allotments. In other words, we have to provide additional costs because the school is so small. We need to provide this person here, this. They don't earn that allotment based on the number of students. But they still have to have it. You've got to have a minimum to get to operate the school. So there's costs you could save there, because now with a bigger school, you can earn those allotments. There's the potential value of repurposing that facility for something else. To attack, to approach the academic gap, provide some other alternative way of learning. You can improve the safety and security of the site by building a new school, combining it into a new one in which there's only, you reduce the number of entries into the facility instead of having entries all over the place. Of course, you've got new efficient systems in there, and now you've also got a twenty-first century learning environment. But when we took a look at how many other schools we could consolidate, we had a pretty good list, but what was also interesting is that we learned that most of those opportunities to consolidate were also on the first seventeen schools on the list. So we redid the plan. Now you see the plan with some consolidations included in it, alright? We start up here at the top, Cumberland Road, Walker Spivey. You see them, they're, they're paired up together. Sunnyside, Seabrook, Raleigh Road with a new school. Ferguson, Easely, and Lucille, JW Coon, Sherwood, which I mentioned. And then here, we may be stretching it a little bit, but we've got Stedman Primary, Stedman Elementary, and Beaver Dam all included. And down here, you see Ashley and Glendale. So now, we have new cost in here. These are costs to provide a new school versus doing the renovations. But when you get down to the bottom line, you'll see that for about just twelve million dollars more compared to what it was a while ago, you've now got six new schools. Alright, instead of just seventeen renovated schools, you've got six new schools, and you've actually impacted eighteen schools. So yes, this is a little bit higher cost, but you could actually drop this cost and still impact the same number of schools and still get the benefit of some new schools being built, which provide you twenty-first century learning at those schools. So the list changes in order a little bit, and that's not uncommon. There's many reasons the list could change. What we also did here, we kind of took a look at some swing space issues and tried to figure out how you would swing some of these spaces. And what I mean by that is when you're in there renovating the school, you need to move the children somewhere, the students somewhere, so they can continue their education. We've tried to incorporate that. That sometimes changes the order in order to make things work outright. It changes the order of your projects. Um, but also, once you start building new schools and you free up some of these schools that you've combined, we could potentially start using some of them also as swing space to get by in interim. But one thing you will notice that is not on here, that has been, uh, an active discussion here lately, is E.E. Smith. That is not on here. So there's one more version of this plan.
Yo, I asked a question for you before. You mentioned Lily and Black, and it's not on that black guy's ass, it's hardly have capacity and the purpose of nearby to move them.
Yes, sir. That has more to do with the capacity in the area and doing, and it falls kind of into the student assignment side of the discussion where Lily and Black could be addressed. Here is another version of the plan that includes E.E. Smith. Now, what you will notice different on this plan is it's got an extra year, year in it. It's actually earlier. Um, and then what I skipped earlier, I forgot to talk about. Let me go back a slide. You see, this starts with fiscal year twenty twenty-three, which is the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. This would require funding, so the soonest that any funding could be made available through the, the county would be in that fiscal year, alright? And just a reminder for everybody, that if a referendum is needed in order to go out and get money, a, a vote has to be taken. The legislature has made it mandatory that it can only happen on even the years. So twenty twenty-two would be the first year also that you'd be able to have a referendum if that's the option. The county has several different ways they could approach, um, funding. With the E.E. Smith, the discussion that's been going on, that could potentially start earlier. So I wanted to reflect E.E. Smith in here, because the other thing that will affect the schedule of your schools is the availability of money. And sometimes that money comes from other sources than normal. There is the potential that there could be some funding that could come from a outside source for the E.E. Smith project. So that's why I've included it in here. And it's included on a, a year earlier because of the, the top potential timing of that project. And you'll note up here, I've got, there's some potential DOD funding reflected in this cost. So this is not the total cost for the project. It's just reflecting maybe some potential funding from another source. And it also doesn't reflect the Aquatic Center because that would be funded by somebody else, alright? So we wanted to try to throw that, put that into plan also, so you could see the impact of adding that to the plan. Of course, the total cost goes up to close to four hundred and ninety million in here. But there could also be options of shifting additional work in order to reduce that. So with all of that said, this has evolved from originally just a list of a whole bunch of needs throughout the district to further developing it into identified renovation projects, and now we're able to put it into a five-year plan. It could potentially be looked at with the county to provide, start providing funding for the school system. This does not catch the school system up. You know, there's a gap in the needs, just like there's a gap in a lot of different needs with the school district. There's a gap in the facility needs. We're not trying to catch up here. We're trying to stay even. And really, when you think about it, if you stay, if you're able to start staying even every year, you will gradually catch up with the facilities. You're not going to make up twenty, thirty years' worth of facility stuff in five years. Also, you notice that some of the schools are marked in red up there. The reason I marked them in red, those are schools that are identified as PACE schools. So I just wanted to take the opportunity to show that there is a, we are touching several of the PACE schools in this plan. We'll be looking for your feedback about how you feel about this process. If you're comfortable with it, there are next steps that we could look at. Right now, we're tentative, tentatively on the schedule to take this same presentation to the Board of Commissioners, alright? And let them hear about the process also. Like I said, we've already been talking to staff to staff, and their staff is comfortable with what we've been presenting. So we could look at presenting to the Board of Commissioners in October. We've talked to the county about a presentation that they could come and present to you that talks about debt capacity. Because that's going to be a key factor when it comes into how this can be funded. And it would be beneficial, I've seen in the past, for the Board of Education to understand how that debt capacity is done. North Carolina is one of those, you know, as you all know, one of those states where the commissioners are involved in your funding. And in this case, they are, they are solely responsible for the funding of your facilities when it comes to these types of projects. It's very uncommon to get it from state level. But as we, from the need, we can see here, we need something from the state also. And there's some talk about that going on. But they can come in here and talk to you about their debt capacity, which talks about how they're able to maintain their, their rating as a, as a double A or triple A school, uh, rating for financials. How that impacts taxes, how that a bond would be funded, and that impact on everybody in the community, the taxpayers. And we've talked to them. They're willing to come do that, and we hope to have that scheduled sometime here in the, in the near future. Then after we've had both of those, feedback from you about this plan, feedback from the commissioners about this plan, of course, we'd be looking at adjusting it accordingly based on that feedback. And then actually putting together an official request that we would come back to the board, ask you to, uh, approve that official request, and that would then go over to the Board of Commissioners. Now, that request is not a request for money. It's a, it's a, it's a request to identify the need for the school system. The need for the facilities. And the Board of Commissioners then would look at it from a funding perspective. And then, once you get this plan up and rolling, you have annual updates. Each year, we would update it. One year would drop off, another year would come onboard. Questions? Ms. McKellen?
I commend your presentation. Uh, but prior to you. Prior to you, was there a nut, a plan that was presented with the Cumberland County School System that was in place? I mean, you understand what I'm saying?
There, there was a, I know when I look back, there was a plan that I think was looking at about a hundred million dollars a year. It was a plan that was put together, that was presented to the board and presented to the county commissioners a while back. But it didn't move much more after that.
So it wasn't being executed?
No, it was not.
Okay. Now, based upon combining schools into a new school, uh, we just came through our census year. Where we will now get a good idea if there's been an increase in population in Cumberland County, a decrease, or wherever that population may have shifted. Are you looking at that as a component of the five-year plan to see what the population shifts may have occurred? And how that might impact some of the, uh, projects going forward?
The biggest area that's going to impact these projects is where I mentioned earlier, when we talked about utilization of facilities and that being a factor in the prioritization. So each time that gets updated each year, that will affect the priority system. And so that you could see shifts in the schools based on utilization being one of those factors.
My last question. With the federal, I know you said that there possibly could be some DOD funds. But with the federal budget and going through the legislative process, are you aware of, is there potential that legislators could have in that federal budget funding for a portion of our schools and that cost factor? I mean, if, if legislators wanted to put that forth in the House and the Senate and it passed, would monies then come back to the state and then be distributed to the county commissioners and then, uh, to the Board of Education to, uh, build the schools?
I, like, there's always a potential for something like that. And like you said, it would funnel down, and then a dollar amount would be identified, and there again, And there again, the importance of the annual updates, at that point, we could adjust our plan to incorporate that funding in the best way we possibly can.
Okay, thank you.
Sam?
Do we have, will we be getting exactly, will we be building schools previously or will, will we need to acquire more land?
In these particular examples, we did review where each one was located. And in our plan right now, there is at least one of the two sites that the schools have been combined. One of the two sites that we feel like we could fit the school on, the new school on. But we would have to swing, we'd have to totally demolish that school and we'd have to swing that staff, that, that students and everything to another location. That's why we changed the, the schedule of the projects in order to incorporate that swing space in there to be able to move along.
Joe, I'm assuming there would be, um, community gatherings where people could give their input before we get too far into this as soon as, I mean, I'm assuming people are watching today. But are, is that in the plan at this point?
What would usually happen is that there's going to be a referendum that goes out there, that there is a, a, a community engagement plan that goes with that. And the community is brought in to, to identify the needs and take them through an explanation of how the plan was developed and what's in the plan. And with any plan, when you start, if you have to have a vote, that is one more thing that could shift the, the order of the projects on there. Because sometimes having a project in every part of the county helps you get the voters out there to vote for it. And frankly, you can walk into the majority of your schools here in Cumberland County and argue that that school could be a priority to be renovated.
Great questions. Great, great, great questions. Um, and Charles, to your point, it's not as likely when legislation gets involved, just through our experience. Because when they start to deal with their monies, um, let's say if I was your representative in Raleigh. But they don't have one in Wake. It starts to get real tricky when that happens. Um, yes.
I, I agree with you. But I believe that there is a great opportunity.
Yes. Yes, absolutely. Yes, sir. 1,000%. So let's do this. Um, great presentation. I've sit through 200 of these probably. And that was very thorough, very thorough. Because you could see the red indicators. I mean, you have really thought through processes. Now, your takeaway is to start thinking about how to make it work? What are some potential gaps? Because we want to be a collaborative entity. Because if you can tell him potential gaps in private, remember, we talked about that board, we'll look better when we go public. Does that make sense? So you got to start thinking, and none of these things are negative, but this is where you have a board chairwoman. As the board chairwoman, you talk about this and say, well, here's something we may want to consider because I know how my community thinks. And I think you said it or you said it, sometimes when, or no, you started it. When you start talking about projects, well, my school's got to be number one. That feasibility and community study is going to be the game changer. The data controls the direction. The data controls the direction. So everybody stand up for me real quick. Stand up, stand up, stand up. I have the time of 10:40. I would like for you to take a break from 10:40 to 10:50 and then we'll come right back. So check your phones, check your family, check your bladder, check whatever you got to check. But at 10:50, I need you to check back in. All right. Thank you, everybody. Somebody said they were going to check their credit card. All right. We got water and pitchers. I am good. Thank you so much. You know, it's always good to have a tall friend. Everybody look, it's always good to have a tall, let's get online so people can see this height opportunity. So I think what was critically important this morning from the staffing standpoint is Joe and his team went beyond the data and they cross-referenced what was the depth of your options. As school board leaders, as community stakeholders, as individuals that are listening in today, I would highly encourage you to continue to allow the professionals to put together a very thorough professional conversation. What Joe did is he gave us, here's where we are. Here's option one, here's option two, here's option three. And then he even illuminated what was in red, but he became a realist because he said, when you go to each and every community, everybody's community school is number one, which is what you want. So next, we're getting ready to bring up, uh, we're talking about student assignment. So, um, let's get started, gang, student assignment. Let's jump right in.
Good morning. We're going to jump into everybody's favorite topic, student assignment. Since we met last met back in the spring of 2019, a tremendous amount has happened and things have certainly changed. Uh, and from a school standpoint, you know, of course COVID, uh, we've actually declined about 3,000 students. Uh, we've also opened up two new virtual schools. Uh, they have approximately combined 2,000 students. So our facilities right now actually are housing about 5,000 students less than they were two years ago. Uh, now, from a projection standpoint, this is, this has skewed our formulas tremendously. And it's put us in a catch-22 position. Um, going into this school year, you think back in January, to project what was going to happen, uh, this September, this August, September, October, um, what was the number of students that were going to show up for school, we were kind of caught. Uh, would everything return to normal and everybody come back in? Would we not even be in school? Will we be back in on partial basis? Or will people be reluctant to bring their students back? And so we were, we had a wide, wide range of where we could end up. And we looked at the projections and, and basically I had to make some assumptions. I had to make some guesses. I will say that most of them turned out pretty good, but we were very, very lucky. I want, uh, that we came fairly close to what we, what we were shooting at. But we're still in the catch-22 because you fuck either you fund your projection or you fund where you were. And with that, if you fund your projection, which we projected much lower than we were, then you're under risk. If everybody shows up, we don't have teachers. If you fund, if you fund where we were and the projection happens or even worse, because the projection wasn't like the bottom, it was more of the middle. Uh, you, you got way too much, way too much staff. You, you may owe the state a pile of money, buddy. Well, I hate to tell you, we're in the same boat next year. This hasn't solved itself yet. We're still dealing with COVID. We still don't know what, what is going to happen moving forward. Now, the projection formulas themselves are great formulas provided everything stays the same. If you have normal building or normal decline, projection formulas do a great job of projecting exactly where you're going to go. But if you have sudden change, they're not very useful. And if you have multiple things changing, then they're even less useful. And so right now, we have multiple things changing and we are blind. We are absolutely blind. We can't see growth. We can't see decline. We can't tell if a neighborhood, yeah, we can look at a neighborhood and see if some people are moving in, but we really don't know about the children. Uh, and you definitely can't see decline. We can't see when people are actually moving out. Uh, so it make, that is a very, very challenging position to be in when you start talking about student assignment. Because what is normal moving forward? What's going to happen next year and the year after and year after? Is everybody coming back? If they are, we can have some facility problems overnight. If they are not, we might be moving people around for no reason or very little reason. Just take a look at the high school enrollment, how it's changed since the 10th day in 2019 to the 10th day in 2021. Every single school has dropped. But there's some shocking ones up here. If you look at Grace Creek, you would consider one of your fastest growing districts in the county. You look at it building wise, they're the second, they've dropped the second most. E. Smith probably wouldn't, most big one here probably wouldn't consider it a growing district. They're probably growing. I can't see it for sure, but they're actually, they only dropped 18 students. So they're actually probably in a growth mode, but I can't tell you how much. Middle schools, every last one of them has declined. Elementary schools, look at the ones- Elementary schools, look at the ones on top, fastest growing districts. Galberry, Melvin Honeycutt, Melvin Honeycutt has dropped 17%. Would anybody think that by looking at the neighborhoods around it? If they all come back tomorrow, if we, you know, they all come back tomorrow, we're gonna be, we may be in a bind, especially if they've been growing in the meantime. And just to show you, there's only four schools that have increased in enrollment during that time. Beaver Dam, Beaver Dam was kinda small to start with and they were, you know, sparsely populated. Sunnyside has grown a little amount. E Miller's, a lot of that's due to choice. And Walker Spivey's due to the Hope Six building. And that will probably jump quite a bit too when this is all over. And I wanted to show you this here. This is kinda my projection from last year overall. And you can see here that we've declined steadily, but in 2021, we dropped a couple thousand students to 48,274. And this was my middle line projection this year. We're probably not gonna hit that, not unless we pick up a whole lot. Ten tables near 47,000. So now, remember the formula's a shot. So formula-wise, even with me adjusting them and playing with them and all that, that's what it shows moving forward. But that's not realistic if everybody comes back. But I did want you to see something here. Look at the high school though. High school's still growing, even with this. I did want you to notice that. I'm gonna kinda look back a minute, back to 94, 95, last time we did a major redistricting in this county. There probably wasn't a lot of us here then. I may have been the only one that actually worked on it. Just to show you how public and private and homeschool and charter school enrollment has changed during that time. Public schools are showing here in the blue, the private schools in the red, the homeschools in the yellow, and the charter schools in whatever this color is. As you can see, public schools have less of the total population. And look at, the homeschools especially have grown tremendously during that period.
My fourth year, I recently looked at some data from the state. Tumnul County has the highest number of vouchers for public children to go to private schools than any county in North Carolina. Let me say it again. Tumnul County has the highest number of vouchers that are issued for children to go to private schools with a public voucher. And a lot of it has to do with athletics.
And just to look at the tabular data here, as you can see, here then, we have less students in the county than last year. So where did they go? Now, I will point out something to you. Homeschool students, we jumped like 500. The homeschools do not count until they're seven years old. Okay? They don't record them until they're seven years old. So that number doesn't represent all those kindergartners that stayed home last year. Now, the interesting thing is if they come back before they're actually counted as a homeschool student, they gotta go to kindergarten. But if they wait till they're seven and actually get a registered homeschool, then they can come back on a grade level of their own. So not only do we not know exactly where they are, but we don't know what grade level they're gonna come back at. Way back in 94, 95, we did a county-wide redistricting. We converted to middle schools. We put in three new elementary schools, did eight high school additions. Over 6,000 students were reassigned. And then we did have a delay for one year. And our objectives for that was, first of all, we were really growing at the time. Military increases, especially the western part of the county. So maximum use of facilities was, you know, was number one priority. Then it was adequately planned for future student growth. To have better racial balance, be more reflective of the community that we were in. Then we wanted contiguous areas. The great organization should be consistent. And they wanted to maintain feeder concepts as a last priority. So we went ahead forward with that plan. I think we did pretty good. We actually achieved what we wanted to achieve and it lasted for a long, long time since, you know, here we are 17 years later. No, I'm sorry, 28 years later. And we still haven't done another major redistricting. Since that time though, a lot of things have happened. Class size reduction was probably the biggest thing that, you know, we had, just when we thought we had it right, state came in and reduced class sizes and messed everything up. And then we added choice schools, private homeschool growth, so a lot of things, military changes. So there are a lot of factors that have led us to the point that we're at now. One thing I want to point out is how demographics have changed. Look just for the ethnic composition of students. In 94, 95, 49% white. Today, only 27. Hispanics have gone from 4% to almost 15%. We didn't even use the term multiracial back in 94, 95, and now it's 9%. We have done some redistrictings since 2000, a lot of small ones. Obviously, every time you open up a school, we open up Jack, John Griffin, Grace Creek, you have to do a redistricting. So we've had 11 different ones of those in 11 different years, over 8,000 students. I'm gonna take a quick look for you and you've got some tabular data that gives you more detail. I'm not going through all that for you today. But we'll take a look at each attendance area. Want to say about Jack Britt District? It's high income. It's been fast growing, maybe not in the last year, but before that. Jack Britt and John Griffin were gonna be above capacity, but they're not now. Honeycutt, we saw, has dropped tremendously, but they were well above capacity. The only elementary that's still above is Stony Point. Grace Creek District might be the fastest growing district right now. Grace Creek High was supposed to be well above capacity come this year. Thanks to COVID, we didn't have that problem. Galberry Farm was 117% of capacity in 2019, but now only 82%. Cape Fear, Cape Fear, I like to call it a ticking time bomb. 40% of the landmass of the county. It does not take dense development for that to blow up on you overnight. You don't have to have a lot of half acre lots. You can have a lot of two to five acre lots start going in and all of a sudden, those schools could be growing on you pretty fast. And Cape Fear High School is near its capacity and Matt Williams is pretty close as well. A lot of elementary schools right now are well below capacity. Douglas Bird, Douglas Bird has a declining population. It was declining before we started this and it's inclining even more now.
You're talking about the school or the district?
The district, the whole district. But it would, the school would be included. Yeah. They have a large number of EC classes, they're low income. Right now, Bird High is at 65% of its capacity. And the majority of the elementary schools are under 80%. E Smith High School is well below capacity, has high percentage of students of color, low income. They have a large number of choice programs in the district. And when you think about that, you've got schools under enrolled and you've got a lot of your choice programs in that area. And of course, many of the elementary is also below capacity. Terry Sanford District, declining population. Kinda, all the inner city, all the inner schools are declining. They have a high percentage of students of color in some schools and others are more balanced. Alma Easton has actually dropped about 30% of its enrollment in the last two years, but it was one we were extremely concerned about. Right at the moment, we're not as concerned, but if they all came back. They have a low number of EC self-contained classes. And places like Glendale and Ashley and Terry Sanford's enrollments are being propped up by choice. If they weren't there, you'd see even more decline. Pine Forest District is one that has a potential for growth. It's an outer district. But we've been, I will say this, we've been talking about that potential for growth since 1994, 95. It really hasn't occurred as much as some people thought. But that doesn't mean it's not gonna start. It's almost like it has two parts to its district. You have the Spring Lake section, which is low income. Most of the schools are below capacity. WT Brown and Lily and Black are both well below capacity. And right now, TC Barrett's housing WT Brown, but we'll be changing that soon, I believe. You could take all Lily and Black and put it in WT Brown and you still have space left over. The Pine Forest portion of the district has actually been growing up until COVID. They're higher income, so it's a much different district depending on which side you're on. And then the Westover District, it's been rebounding since the 2011 tornado. Westover Middle is opt-out school for Anchestia, and it's one we have been concerned about. And there's still 97% of capacity right now. But all the elementary schools are currently at 85% or less of capacity. And they were all, but Morgan Road over capacity two years ago. They have a large number of apartments and rentals. They have a large number of military students. When military changes, that's the first district you gotta look at. To say, okay, are we growing the military? I look at Cliffdale, Morgan Road, because that's where they go first typically. And there's been a lot of rumors here lately that we were gonna get an influx of military because of the pulling back from overseas and so forth. I haven't seen it yet, but that doesn't mean it's not gonna happen. Sandy First High District, declining population, high percentage of students of color, low income. Of course, year-round schools are well below capacity. And Lake Rim is probably, was above capacity, now they're only 85%. And the Southview District, it's also been, it's been in rapid decline. I do think it may have been at its bottom now. But if you look at schools well below capacity, the two middle schools, Southview Middle and Hope Mills Middle, they have a lot of space. So solutions to your, potential solutions to your problem. You got redistricting, you got Huts, increase marketing and choice programs. You can increase transportation to certain schools. Or you can create or eliminate some choice or magnet programs. I wanna talk about redistricting now. I think we've kinda promised out that we were gonna redistrict TC Barrett in 2021, 22. So that's be the first thing we look at. My question comes, and what we need your feedback on, is what to do for 2022, 23? I just kinda laid out the issues that we have. Do we redistrict the entire county? Do we redistrict problem areas? Or do we hold until things normalize a little bit? And I'd like to say, there's probably issues with any of those options. Now, I think Mr. Desiremore sent out some stuff earlier to you at an earlier board meeting, asking you to rank the criteria for a redistricting. And the results were pretty mixed, but there was one thing that did come out of that was that these three criteria tied for first place. Best utilization of facilities, proximity to where the students live, and diversity. Now, there was a wide range on the individual responses, but the three tied. And really, that doesn't give me a lot of clear direction, but it does, we did limit it to what we, these three. Sometimes proximity and diversity work against one another. So I'm gonna talk about diversity a little bit, because it's the one that's hardest for me to get my head around. So what do we use to measure diversity? Do we use test scores? And those come in at student level, we can get those for each student. Wake County does that for their diversity planning. Do we use housing tax values, which what we would do is probably group neighborhoods and we'd assign a value for like a scale of one to five for a neighborhood? And we would use that to kinda come up with an income balance. Do we use census income data? I think, I believe I heard that the income data was becoming available last week. But that doesn't go down to the student level. It doesn't go down to the neighborhood level. Probably all we can get ahold of is block group level, which is probably a grouping of three or four neighborhoods together. Or ethnicity, and that could be at the student level, and I'm not sure if we're allowed to use that, so I'm not, maybe Nick can chime in on that. But which one would we use? We'd have to know that in preparing a plan. And then, what are we trying to achieve? If we're trying to achieve diversity, the planners would like some input on, do we want, we want improvement? We wanna get within 10% of average, 20% of average, 30% of average, or what are we trying to get to? And how far do we go to achieve it? Is it neighboring district, 10, 2 miles, 10, 5 miles, or are we talking a whole county? The last thing we want to do is bring you something you have no interest in passing and we stirring up the world. So what we'd like to do is for you to tell us what y'all are interested in us looking at.
So we're gonna do this part a little bit differently, because this is very, very critical. Because if the board is only talking, you have your perspective. And if the staff is only talking, then you have your perspective. So it's gonna be a unique divide. What we're gonna do is with this conversation of topic, because the staff have to have some context. We're gonna take from this side of the room over, and we want you to discuss what you just heard. Then we're gonna take this side of the room over and then for you to discuss what you heard. Now, this one will be different. We do need a recorder and a report out. This is critical, because if we do it in an open forum, sometimes voices get lost. So if you don't mind, go ahead and start shifting. You have 10 minutes. You have 10 minutes on this side. I do need a recorder. Now, if you have not been blessed with the ability to write legibly, do not volunteer to be the recorder. I'm gonna say that again. If you do not have the ability of penmanship, don't volunteer to be the recorder. What you're discussing is what do you think some next steps should be based upon the presentation that you just heard? Now, we will need your help. If you don't mind, just float between both groups and just kinda hear what's going on. But you're just having a discussion at this point on what you just heard. Yes, all, all, yes, all, all, all. And all of this. So this is board and staff. Yes, all, all, yes, all, all, all. And all of this, so this is board and staff.
Yeah, good.
All right, leaders, it's time for us to get back together. Stay where you are. I think I have the Pirates versus the Cardinals. I think that's who I have. So you can stay where you are, because you wanna be a united front. And I think that we are ready. Now, my role right now is to write what I hear. So recorders on each side, if you don't mind, draw a line and write what you hear on your side. Now, this is kind of one of the things that we do as a company. What we typically do is not ever written in a contract. We like to follow up with our recorders a week after, just to make sure that my notes align with your notes. All you're doing as a recorder is you're just shooting us an email, and then we're gonna look at yours and look at ours. That's what it is. So the recorders that are recording now, you have passed the test, because I did look at your penmanship, and you got an A. Because if, I have asked recorders to no longer volunteer. So the recorders that I've had, not punishing you, but if you could kind of keep this process going. So I gotta do something real scientific, real quick. Madam Chair, watch this. If they're hard, let them go. Any mini money. Mo, you can either go first or make them go first. Which one do you want?
We'll go first. So, so we started with the discussion about whether or not we should wait to do a, a district-wide redistricting versus looking at, at a more targeted redistricting, and I think the, the, the majority of the group said that we should wait to do a district-wide sort of plan due to the impact of the pandemic and waiting for, looking to see how our numbers will rebound. We don't want to redistrict an area, then to find out that the students now are coming back in that area and have realized that you've done something that, that, that needs to be undone. One of the discussions also centered around addressing problem areas which already existed prior to the pandemic. So some of the, the areas that we discussed were like the Lily and Black, WT Brown situation. That is something that has been brought to the board and that has been discussed over several years. And even if a large number of students return, we probably would not see significant changes with regards to, to the populations. The other thing was a change of mindset, that we tend to focus on the schools that are overpopulated without really looking at schools that are underpopulated and how we can better utilize that. So we pointed out the fact that underutilized schools impact, they're, they're required to be staffed differentially. So, so there's an increased cost to the district, but that goes not only just from a, a human capital standpoint. It also impacts operational costs such as transportation and child nutrition and those sorts of things. We talked about building new schools could be, could help draw students from private schools or charter schools or home schools. Because we don't really know where all of the students went. We know that most likely it is being impacted by our private schools that students are, are enrolling, but if we, we really want to draw students back into the district, building, you know, twenty-first century schools that are modern could help draw students back to Cumberland County schools. I think we, we discussed the, the same thing with regards to like a Sherwood Park and Jetta View Coon. Schools that are very, very close to each other, that are also underutilizing space. One of the things we also looked at when, when we talked about redistricting is also looking at self-contained classes within the district and how students with disabilities are being assigned based on, on facility space or availability. When we talk about the diversity piece, one of the things that we talked about was looking at economics versus, versus race as a determining factor. And I think we, we were blessed to have our board attorney here to talk a little bit about keeping us legal. But then also understanding that really poverty is, is gonna be the most impactful area. That's gonna touch on students regardless of the color of their skin. And really, if our focus is to, to diversify, that's the area we really probably need to focus on is as economics versus race. And we had the discussion that as we start looking at redistricting, we don't want this to turn into a, a black versus white discussion. It really should be a discussion about what's best for kids and, and maybe equalizing access through, through focusing on, on poverty as the, the primary indicator.
So staff, when you hear that, we've gotta make sure that that gives you enough to take something back to do something with. Because I've heard great report outs, but there's still not enough information from a staffing cabinet standpoint. So cabinet staff leaders, and hearing those things, does that give you something to work with? Okay, I'm seeing a few head nods. Wait after the pandemic is completely over to see where we're landing. That was a big takeaway I heard. Building more modern schools, the two-for-one, you're gonna draw people back, cause it's a shiny toy. I love the fact that you were talking about the EC model, but I love the fact that then you were able to take the data and show where it was at. Because if you had not thought about it, it wouldn't have been in the manuscript. That's what a healthy trusted relationship should look like. And boy, did you hit this one. I call it the ecosystem, the economics compared to race. That's just not here, but Dr. Conley made a very valid point. When you're starting to see that you're number one in people transitioning, that's saying something without saying something. What that really says is you can't keep doing what you've been doing, and I love the fact of what you said. It, when, when you can consolidate a two-for-one and it's new, it makes sense for people. So that was a summary. Staff, once again, did that meet the expectations of being able to give you some tools to work with and some things to come back with? Or do we need to go deeper? Now's the time, because I don't want you to say, well, I wish they would have told me a little bit more about this. Because you gotta go back to the tool shed to work, and they're expecting that you've understood it by you not speaking and sharing that you don't have enough information. And I'll have to speak up, but we did run out of time here. One other thing I would like to touch on is how far do you go to achieve this? You know, that one, that one thing where we talk about improvement within ten percent of average or within twenty percent. Just how, how far do you go to achieve those changes? Because when you do, you end up influencing other things in the process too. That's a very good point. And what, and you have options. What I've seen is you let them do a redacted process if they go ten percent, twenty percent, sixty percent. And then that gives you something to do, but what you don't want to do is let them do a lot of case study data research and you do nothing with it. Because they can do all of this data analytics stuff and spend a lot of time, and then we say, well, that was cute. Cute costs you money. You've got to have some form of access, so how far do we go? And I just put three question marks beside that. That's one of my takeaways, because I don't know in this environment, do we have enough intel to answer that question? We may have to lean on the rubrics of, I go ten percent, this is what you got. If I go forty percent, this is what you got. If I go eighty, I'm almost there, so you give me the eighty green light, that's a lot. So that's just kind of some of those balance follow-up factors. Does that make sense? Because I don't wanna get excited and delighted, people, oh, it was great. They say, well, what did he say? I don't know, but it was good. We gotta get to the point now, and we go, as Jim Collins would say, from good to great, because I'm starting to write. And if you don't want me to write, because this is gonna be my, my follow-up, this is how I begin to execute to help teams go into action. This is now becoming evidence-based. All the fun stuff, the jokes, the personality tests, that was great. But now my B's coming out. We gotta get down to business, okay? Ta-da, action.
Our conversation was so similar to the other group. We began by discussing what are the necessary areas now? Do we start there? Do we look at the smallest opportunities first? Do we hold and wait until we see what the changes are gonna come with the returning from the pandemic? We considered homeschool, private schools, and would they return to Cumberland County? We considered the new growth, the unknown new neighborhoods. The new housing, empty houses, and, and what if they fill up? What if the families that are living together go back into the homes and fill up those schools again? We considered consolidation, tearing down one school to build, to consolidate two schools. And then using one of those facilities for overcrowding, if we do fill those schools back up. We talked about transportation and making sure that we were. we were that, um, that our consolidation was in close proximity. We looked at some of our, or we talked about some of our poorest-conditioned schools. And do we start with those? Do we put the priority on those schools that are serving, um, some of our lowest-performing and lowest-income students and making structures to serve those students? And then we talked about the value in community hearing this conversation. Knowing that some districts don't want to change. Knowing that if we give information sooner, there'll be a long process to making sure everybody understood. And making sure that we do get that information out so everybody can understand it, make the right decisions, get the buy-in, and make sure that we are moving the process through the system to include all people.
You almost gave me Carpaton. That was, that was good. Uh, the big one is learn from past key performance indicators. How did you put stuff out in the past and it may have gotten slowed down? Here's a big one. Who did you accidentally leave out? Here's another one to consider. What methodology or strategy are you going out to get the information to and from? Everybody's not gonna answer an email. Just not. Some people, certain communities, you need to know who the community legacy leader is. That was cute. Let me say it a different way. You need to know who the big mama is. You need to know who that person is that has PP, personal power. There's a personal power person in the country club. There's a personal power person in the trailer parks. There's a personal power person in Section 8 housing. They're all in every ecosystem of communities. Gotta know who they are. And then here's a part that stings. If they had a bad experience in Cumberland County schools in 1971, I don't think any of us were in this situation in 71. And then their children had a challenging experience in 91. And then in 2021, this would be the grandchild. They're probably not sitting at the kitchen table saying, you know what? Ms. Chisholm is doing the best job she can and we're gonna give them a second, third, and fourth chance. The conversation probably goes something like this. I didn't trust him then. That's the grandma. The mama, I ain't trust them either. The daughter, that's why I want to go to a different school. You have three potential, three generations that may have an accurate feeling, but an inaccurate new experience. Teach Kinston. An accurate feeling, can't dismiss their feeling, but it's inaccurate because you're giving me, you're almost clouding my vision on what happened to you three to four decades ago and we're not getting a chance. So you gotta figure out how to get those things in place. Um, have, has the area did a disparity study? Has that taken place? The Chamber or anybody, uh, economic disparity study in the county? How long ago was it? Get a guess. Might not be bad to get your hands on that set of analytics because it's telling you what was. And here's the challenge. We still don't know what it's gonna be because they never thought a pandemic would have happened when they did it three years ago. Does that make sense? This is just something to think through. Great job in reference to reporting out any questions. I love how we had institutional knowledge in this group and we had institutional knowledge in that group. You've got to split your knowledge base up. I think you said, hey, come over here with us because they got Joe. You recruited. All right, so next up, all right, so take your seats. We're almost getting close to lunch. We're gonna have another report out. We got a new fresh mic coming. And then once Dr., once Dr. Wilson Norman, um, shares, just so you know where we're going, because some of you like to know the plan. What we're gonna do is we're going to break back into groups and then have some additional discussion about the areas of focus that she's gonna share with us. Why is that critically important? Once again, in a true retreat, they have got to have evidence to go back with to bring something to you, but they've got to have something from you. All right, here we go.
The area that I want to talk about is the, a case study of the language immersion programs. And we call it a case study because what we've tried to do is look at what we have and just think about what could be in terms of reduction of redundancy of programs, a K-12 alignment of programs, and how this might fit into the facilities discussion that Joe had this morning or the student assignment discussion that Mark had. And so thinking about our program, so we decided to choose one choice program just to kind of look at where it is in our district and how might we align a choice program or magnet program as part of the student assignment and facilities discussion. That this is part of our strategic plan. It actually falls in Area 1 under, uh, 1E, Clear Career Pathways. And in that, we talk about our choice programs and how we want alignment of those programs. These are all interrelated, that the programs as we, as Joe builds schools or renovates schools, when we think about the programs, we have requirements. Special floors for dance, different things for CTE. So all of these discussions factor into the needs of the facilities. As we think about assigning students, when we think about overcrowding or undercrowding, we can really think about how a choice or magnet program could assist in either filling up a school or reducing pressures from a school and moving them to a different area of the county. And so we really want to focus on alignment of our programs. We have lots of choice programs. And choice has been in our school district for a while, but it has been driven by school-based choice options. Maybe a principal comes to a school and they want to be a language program. Or they come to a school and they want to be math and science. What we were wanting to look at is that when a family or, uh, a student chooses a choice program in kindergarten, that we're really clear on where they would go uh, all the way through elementary, through middle, and through high school. At this time, that's not something we can guarantee. That you might start off in a language program or math and science school, but we don't have an automatic feeder to that school. We don't transport you to choice programs. That it is based on your own transportation. And so as we studied the language immersion program, we tried to look at what are our current programs that we have in place? And we have Spanish, we have Chinese, we have Arabic. We also try to look at the level of interest. How many families are interested in the programs and where are they? And then what is our impact on student assignment? And so when we think about language immersion in our district, that we want our students to be bilingual. That we want them to have an opportunity to experience different cultures, to demonstrate proficiency in those languages, and to develop a sense of culture. It's kind of the undergirding focus of our language programs. That we actually use a couple of different models. At the elementary level, we use a 90-10. That means 90% of your instruction is in your language and 10% in English. And then we also use a 50-50 model. And that impacts the staffing that exists within those schools at the elementary level. In middle school, we use the 50-50 model mainly, which is instruction in Spanish or whatever the language is 50% of the time. Or we may use a targeted language arts program. And that means that your language arts instruction would be in that language. In high school, you can take a sequential course pattern. Spanish 1, Spanish 2, Spanish 3, Spanish 4, Chinese, same follow-through. And you can add AP based on the various levels. You can also take college credit courses in that span, in the Spanish or Chinese courses or whatever the selected world language might be. When we look at our elementary, uh, language immersion programs, EE Miller, the model is a 90-10 model in K-2 and 3-5-50-50. We have 147 students that participate through our choice program at EE Miller. That means that 147 students have selected choice and their parents provide them transportation to that particular school. New Century, we have Chinese, um, 90-10 and 3-5-50-50. We have 116 students who participate in our choice programs. Howard Hall, I want you to pay special attention to Howard Hall. Previously, Mark said Howard Hall was overcapacity. But we have a choice program at Howard Hall. That it is a K-2 90-10 model, 3-5-50-50, and we have 101 students who live in the Howard Hall district who participate in choice. So they, it's already at their school. They were going to attend Howard Hall because it's closed to other students. So those are only students at Howard Hall who participate in that program. It goes on. WH Owen has Spanish. We have about 147 students and then Montclair, 57. Will we go on to our middle school programs? Ann Chestnut has Spanish, but we also know Ann Chestnut has Chinese and Arabic. Note, Ann Chestnut is year-round. It uses a 50-50 model. We have about 49 students who are enrolled through our choice program. When we think about Pine Forest, it has Spanish. These are students who move up from Howard Hall who want to continue. And they, uh, there are 14 students who continue into a Pine Forest Middle School. So that means we have to make some adjustments to find a teacher who can teach those 14 students in a targeted language arts course. When we think about New Century Middle, this, they have Spanish and Chinese. And we have a language arts targeted program. So when we look at the numbers of students who are moving from the elementary to the middle to trying to keep that continuum of the, the, uh, world language program. What we're finding is that we have lots of language programs across our district. But we don't have an articulation between programs. So you could be assigned Ann Chestnut, but not necessarily be in a language program. You are not automatically moved from a language program into Ann Chestnut. Note, Ann Chestnut is year-round. Many of the language programs that I shared with you were on a traditional calendar. So as we think about our high school language program, that in high school, we have our, uh, Cumberland International Early College, which has all of the languages. We also have Southview, which has the IB program and has the languages. And 71st, which has Arabic, Chinese, and Spanish. As we think about trying to create a level of alignment, that we could articulate a elementary school feeder pattern from W T Brown, which was undercrowded, under-enrolled. Or Manchester, which is in the same district. So instead of having students at Howard Hall in the Pine Forest District, maybe we would identify an under-enrolled school to attract families there. We already have EE Miller, which is year-round. So when you select a year-round school and apply a choice program, and it is hard to get parents to select both. Most of the time, you either have a calendar school and that's all it is, just year-round. So a family chooses year-round. Or you have a language school. EE Miller, we have both, calendar and language. WH Owen is in an attendance zone of Douglas Bird. Remember on that sheet, we had Montclair. So in the same attendance zone with small numbers of students, we have two Spanish immersion schools. And so that's an under-enrolled district. And so thinking about how do we create a continuum based off of having schools that are targeted to make a K-12 articulation? We looked at Brentwood and, and making that possibly a language immersion school to continue a feeder pattern into 71st. All of these schools, these are just ideas of what could be. We can make a feeder pattern or a language K-12 articulation pattern in any zone based off of the needs of student assignment, based off of facility needs. But as we look at what we're doing now, we kind of have programs all throughout the district that don't go with each other. So when we think about having a robust and strong choice program, it's very difficult to do that with what we have right now. We, we would continue with our advanced world language options at our Cumberland International Early College, but we'd like to have families know in kindergarten, that's where you go to high school. That is not how it is designed right now. Anyone can enter Cumberland International through the magnet process at the ninth grade level. And so maybe you've not had language experiences, but you could be interested in Cumberland International. And so just thinking about how we are being strategic and intentional about our facilities, our student assignments, and our programs to ensure that we have clear articulation. So if we were to think about making clear articulations, we would have to sunset some programs and introduce new. This is just an example of if Jack Brent is in an attendance zone that's quickly growing, that we wouldn't necessarily have a choice program there. We'd put it in a place that was not grown. And we would have to put in transportation to move students from an overcrowded district to an undercrowded district, but you do that through choice or magnet. So thinking about how you might take choice away from New Century International just because of the assignment issues and move it to an under-enrolled place. You would do the same thing with New Century Middle and make an articulation. But I come back to, I'm not suggesting that we remove the year-round status from Ann Chestnut, but when you have a language school that's a calendar school, it makes it very hard to make the articulation K-12. Just another example of how you would build a pathway in the 71st District, EE Miller Spanish, Brentwood Chinese, feed into Ann Chestnut, feed into 71st. Again, even in this example, because Ann Chestnut is year-round, EE Miller is year-round, those families may be happy, but your traditional families at Brentwood may not. But we've already invested a lot of language support in Ann Chestnut. And so just thinking about that articulation of how you make a K-12 program and how it supports facilities as well as student assignment. Again, Howard Hall, this is just an example of an overcrowded school with a specialized program for families within the overcrowded district. You would take the choice program of the language and move it to a place like W T Brown that's partially vacant. Or to a Manchester in which you'd like to attract a different, um, family or socioeconomics to a particular school. That could be Manchester. Montclair, again, we have the the same language programs in the same attendance zones in two small schools. And so this is just an example of some of the redundancy that we have in our current choice programs. Some of the, uh, lack of articulation between, between elementary, middle, and high school. And this serves as an example to start conversations about what could be. That we have lots of language programs. We could have other programs like Science and Math, Gifted and Talented. Um, thinking about an articulation of Humanities and IB. We can do lots of different things around the programs, but Joe and Mark need us to think about what programs do we want because they impact the facilities as well as the student assignments. And so I leave you with just thinking about what could be based on the programmatic options we have in our county.
So we want, what we want you to do, pretty simple again. Get back in your groups. Mark, come back over and help this group out. They may need it or they may not, but I like you because we're about the same height, so it works good for me. Um, but we want you to really think about, okay, what did you hear? What did you like? Or maybe you didn't like. Here's the key. And where are we going? And when we say where are we going, where do you think we should go? I'll give you a little hint into the afterdoom. When we start talking about communication, this is how most groups walk out of a retreat with direction. So go ahead and get on this side. Go ahead and get back in these groups. Get back in these groups. Once again, what'd you hear? What'd you like? What were some of the things you may didn't like? We need you to talk and discuss. You got ten minutes. Ten minutes. Last time I think I said seven and somebody said we ran out of time. So we'll get you ten. Flexibility. All right, talk to each other. You can sit in chairs. You don't have to stand. For those that may be a little bit cooler, I would highly encourage you to stand up. We don't want you to freeze for a second anyway. All right, so let's talk about it, team. Ten minutes. All right, so you knew this was coming. Uh, and I feel bad about it because two things. One, you're not paying me any attention right now because what you're saying is good. And two, if I didn't know any better, what I heard this group say, this group was saying. And I hope that the persons that are looking in and, and there was a person over there, thank them for coming and all the persons. Your school board and staff are really working today about plus best for all children. So I think that's critical for you to hear and see. But what I really have gathered, you may want to keep something similar to this strategy or philosophy. Because I want to show you three things that I've noticed. One, every one of your voices is being heard today. Two, you're not agreeing on everything, but you're coming up with what could actually economically work for the district. But here's the third one. The staff, the cabinet, the team are bringing to you the complexity of challenges that they have when it's fourteen. And this and that, and they're really now wanting you to see behind the curtain some of the challenges and give you tools with them receiving tools from you. What are some of the options? This does not happen in a lot of places. So there's soup back there. And they told me, um, that soup is good, but soup cold is not good. So traditionally, I don't know how your board does it if you bless the food and then you go eat. Is that how you typically do it? Is there a person that does that or? Susan, Susan, if you don't mind blessing our food, now let me tell you what's gonna happen. Once again, you're head of schedule. If you can sit close to each other to keep this going about this subject and the previous subjects, we would like for that to occur. If you can sit close to each other, in other words, so you sit on this side, you sit on that side. I think you probably already rented the space. Who knows? You may own the space. Pull the tables together in a social distance manner and do a working lunch conversation. It's not that I'm trying to work you to death. But if I'm only here a short period of time, I want to get the best out of you, but I want to give you the best that I got. Because I don't want us to say, well, we didn't accomplish anything. Oh, no, I have three things right now that we've done. So Susan, if you don't mind, then come and bless the food.
Bless our heads. Lord, I come to you right now just thankful for every person that's in this building. Thank you, Lord, for the openness of minds. Um, the ideas that have been expressed here, Lord, we just pray your blessings on everything that we're gonna do. And first and foremost, Lord, again, thank you for those people who are out working for us each and every day. We pray that you'll bless the food that we're about to take. We pray that you'll take that nourishment to our bodies and that we will use our bodies for your service. And we pray all of this in thy name. Amen.
All right. You could actually make it in the ministry. My dad was praying one time. And I was like, man, the people gonna fall out because you prayed so long. They was trying to eat. I, I was seeing people look like they was waiting in the water. They was waiting in the water. So let's have some lunch. I'm gonna come and join you too. And to the ladies in the back that have prepared lunch for us, you're about to hear a round of applause of the ladies in the back and gentlemen. We are clapping for you. Thank you so much. So Dr. Wilson Norman went from academics to cooking. Good grief, she does it all.
All right. Well, I got some good news and different news. So Betty, what you want to hear first, the good or the different? Well, the different news is you're going to have to figure out what to do with an extra forty-five to fifty minutes of your day. That's the different news. You want to hear the good news? The good news is, man, I love you guys. This has been good. This has been good. So we're getting ready to start back, and now when we start back, we got to start talking about some strategy and planning and strategic planning. And as we begin to do this, the presentation is set up. As we start talking about the work, the presentation is set up that you guys and ladies are going to jump into some of that strategy work. Think it's budgeting and all those type of things. We get my agenda to make sure I'm telling you the right thing. But yes, budgeting process. So as we begin to talk about the budgeting process, this is critical because I tell people, if you show me your dollar, I will show you your direction. I'm going to say that again, if you show me your dollar. People talk, oh, we want children first. It is amazing people say they want children first, but then they got the whole leadership team at forty-five percent above budget. The next tier is thirty percent above budget, and then kids' buses don't work. Or the cafeteria staff are struggling, or the teacher assistants, or the support staff. So as we begin to talk about the budgeting process today, listen attentively, and as we begin to go through, we're going to go through this process, and then we have something that's going to be very interactive outs after this. So Mr. Lockey, are you ready, sir? We got a fresh mic for you. You get to pick and choose one or two. The mic is ready for you, and thank everybody for a great working lunch. Once again, you're about forty-five minutes ahead of schedule. I am not rushing you, but I would rather maximize on the time because I don't have to go anywhere, but I just want to make sure you know our timeline. So turn it over to you, sir.
Thank you. Good afternoon. As we transition back after lunch, my job is not to put you to sleep. Okay. Power, let's see. Okay, just a little bit about budget. Today is not about trying to take resources and put them in categories of expenditures or that kind of thing. We want to talk a little bit about that process. We talk about budgeting our plan for success and it being just that, a plan. And we need information in developing that plan. So for just a few minutes this afternoon, we want to talk about that plan for student success, some general budget outlines, factors which impact the budget and its preparation, and how we plan, and identifying strategic priorities in the district. You know, we began a little bit at committees this week, beginning to talk about a strategic plan and our budgeting process and preparing for the twenty-three year. So we talked about, we haven't been able to put together a twenty-two budget yet. We're still waiting on for some funding and allocation of those fundings to finalize this year's budget, but it is time to plan for twenty-three, even in light of all of that. Now, yesterday evening, this morning, has been a great start for that. There's been a lot of information that has been shared with us all that talks about needs in the district, identifying priorities, evaluation of data that we have and that we're collecting. Had a great discussion about academic programs and choice that you've been involved in. All of these things come together to put together the plan for student success. Yep. Okay, those slides. Henry, can you see if you can get, there is a, see the link right there, I think will take to some, the handouts that I've had. You have some handouts in your booklet, which I want to talk a little bit about here, and if we can get them up on the screen, we'll do that. But again, our conversations this weekend are important in a planning process. I think I want to say, and I want us to all understand, the budget shouldn't be about driving the school district. We should have a plan and identify the things that we want to do. Resources should support that as we, as we go through our plan and try to implement that plan in our, our district. Now, yes, it will impact it, obviously. We are, we are limited by the resources that we have available to us. So today, I want to spend just a little bit of time, hopefully, getting us to understand what some of those resources might be. Will this control this? Okay, this is our plan for, for student success, our timeline for preparing for the new year. It is a year-long process, as this shows out. We want to begin that process now, and obviously, we're doing that as we're, as we're meeting this weekend. We talked about the desire to get priorities from the board by this December timeline in this calendar, as we prepare and work together and put this together. So where do those priorities develop? So you're, we're sharing this weekend, information and priorities. You're hearing information there. You're hearing information from the communities that you interact with. You're hearing from the teachers, from the parents, maybe from the students, about things and needs that they have at, maybe at their school or in their area, in their district. All of that feeds information that should go into this plan and should develop within this budget. We should put a budget together consistent with our strategic plan, and I've included here a chart of our strategic plan, which I'm sure you have, the priorities of the district. So as we put together a budget for any given year, it should focus along the priorities that are established. So just looking in general about resources that are available for the district. Here, this is taken from our twenty-two budget planning. This is a sheet right out of the board's budget request that was shared with the county, and it just summarizes resources that we saw that were available to us. State resources being the primary source of, of funding for the school districts. We get local money, the current expense fund, that's the money coming from county government. We get federal dollars, various federal programs that support the educational process and provide additional funding in some of the areas that are also funded by state and local dollars. Joe and his team presented about a capital improvement plan that usually comes from capital resources that are available. They shared with us, and the available funding now, around ten million dollars or so that are new dollars that are generated for that capital budget. And you saw the needs within the, within the district and the delta, the difference in, in available funds. The enterprise funds are our child nutrition program primarily. We also have the after-school care. Key thing about it, the enterprise fund, is that these are programs that are business type operations. They are dependent upon the revenues that they can generate. So how does that play into our plan? We talked, talked today about communication, sharing communication throughout the district, and does the child nutrition program know of the programs and plans that are in place? And then what is that impact, and how do they change and adjust for that? They need to be profitable for it not to be a program that, that the board, the district has to continue to fund. And we have some grant funds that, that fund various things in the diff, in the district. They may be specialized programs or, or grants that have been written. These total funds of five-hundred-and-ninety-eight million are broken down by purpose. So you can see that seventy, about seventy-four percent of the budget goes into instructional services, providing the various instructional programs that are needed in the district. We have system-wide support services, about a hundred-and-two million, about eighteen percent of the budget. Ancillary services, non-program changes, and capital outlay make up the majority of the budget. You see that the vast majority of the dollars that, that come to our district are for instructional services and support our instructional programs. So we get down, thank you, so we get down to the bottom part there. You look at salaries and benefits, we've talked about this before, but it does, education and its programs does require people, people resources. And compensating them, providing their benefits, again, eighty percent or so of the budgeted resources go towards those, our premier professionals and their benefits. There is then a very small amount of money, twenty percent or so, that goes for the various contracts, supplies, equipment, and, and those type of services that we provide in the district. So how does all of this, this come together? The five, six-hundred million dollars that, that we receive in the district, we talked about a large part of that coming from state, state funding. So this is just a snapshot sheet out of the state's summary or highlights of the state budget that talks here about the different categories of allotments of state dollars. Want to just take a couple of minutes to share some on that. The state provides position allotments. And in that, they, they, they say, we'll give you teachers, for example, based on an established formula. You can use that money for that purpose. And the position allotment guarantees the salary of that individual, regardless of where they're a beginning teacher or a much more experienced teacher, they'll guarantee that salary for us. We, they, they also do that for school building administrators, principals and assistant principals, instructional support staff, guidance media services, psychological services, they'll make a guaranteed allotment to us. Some of our categories of funding are dollars, teacher assistants, textbooks, central office administration. Here are dollars. You use those dollars as you see fit in these categorical areas. We establish the salaries, apply the benefits. We can hire the number of people that those dollars will allow us to, to employ. And then we'll get categorical allotments, which is funding to address differences in students and district characteristics. So these are specific categories, such as funding for our at-risk, at-risk students, for children with disabilities, limited English proficient, and the low-well supplemental funding of which Cumberland is able to participate in. So those again are generally dollar allotments that the district has choice in decision-making that, that allows us to fund different programs and priorities. And their last item there, just talk about some other grants, school safety grant being one that's been funded over the past several years, and in our case, we've used to supplement the SRO contract that we have with the county for safety and security. So this is a basic outline of the resources and how they're allocated from the state. So I wanted to show you this. This is just a snapshot of Cumberland County schools. This happens to be for the period ending June thirty, twenty-one. These are all the categorical allotments that we receive from the state. You can see there are a lot of categories, three-hundred-and-twenty-one million dollars, and there are various formulas that go into establishing that, and restrictions on how those monies can, can be used. Some cases, we have the ability, capability to transfer some of those monies, to use them in other areas. In other cases, we can't. There are some restrictions that are established with those dollars and, and limits our ability. We talked about classroom teacher allotment, a position allotment. They'll fund a number of positions based on ADM, their established formulas. We're going to talk about that in a little bit more of some of those restrictions. The teacher assistant allotment, being a dollar allotment that we receive, we are able to utilize those monies for that given purpose. That's a restricted allocation that we don't have a lot of flexibility in transferring those monies and using them in, in different ways. We get a supply material allotment from the state for various school supplies or, or different things that are needed in our overall operations to enhance the instructional program. We do have some flexibility in that particular allotment that we can make some moves and changes with that allotment. And you'll see a textbook and digital resource allotment, textbooks and digital resources. So some dollars, less than two million dollars, to provide curriculum materials specifically there on an adopted list of textbook. But many different allotments funding EC programs, ESL programs, CTE programs, that the state allocates us, to us in a variety of formulas. We talk about teachers. In Cumberland, we'll, we're allocated based on students. In K-12, we'll receive somewhere in the range of twenty-one hundred or so. In K-12, we'll receive somewhere in the range of 2,100 or so positions. But there are some restrictions that go along with that. There are established formulas. We'll get a teacher, a kindergarten teacher, for every 18 students. And you'll see down the list by the grades of that formula. About four years ago, they implemented a program enhancement teacher allotment. And now that has been fully implemented for the 22-year at a teacher for every 191 students in grades K-5. They are restricting the use of those positions to elementary schools. But the bigger part is the class size restrictions that are there. So while we have teachers and allotment of teachers, we do have restrictions on how they can be used in decision-making and utilizing those resources to meet the goals and the plans of the district. So there is a class size maximum that for the various grade levels. This particular chart shows us the 20 and 21 and 21, 22 class size maximum and an individual class size. So through K-3, established class size maximums or district maximum and an individual class maximum. And then established guidelines for 4th through 12th grade. There is no class size maximum. I share that so that we understand a little bit about the structure of the resources that are coming to the district and some of the ways maybe that we're handicapped in being able to fully utilize $300-plus million that may be flowed to us from the state. Those are just some of the factors that we have to consider.
If I can highlight that point, that over 300... Highlight the point that over $300 million of our $500 million budget, majority of that is restricted. We don't have any option on how we use that because it is further driven by the state. So we really don't have much flexibility with our overall budget. More than half of it is restricted.
And in some of the requests that are made and maybe through your association, it is generally a platform item that we ask for relief from some of those restrictions. Give us financial flexibility. Let us make the decisions at the local level to best utilize those resources to meet the needs of students in Cumberland. That is an ongoing challenge. There are conversations about changing that formula, how that might come about. And there are pros and cons on both sides of that and whether that is truly something that districts want. Will resources still be fairly allocated, allocated at the same level? But it's important to understand where we are, those dollars, and some of the restrictions that we have in doing that. So as the district plans and prepares a budget and evaluates data, shares that data, as we meet a cabinet and leadership, we plan with principals and executive directors and the various programs through the district. There's a lot that goes into decisions that are made. This particular chart here shows you a planning activity that the district uses with our schools, just to emphasize planning and the efforts that go in into our budgeting and our resources. Our schools are given an allotment of various resources that they plan with within their school buildings, with their teams, with their teachers. They look at data. They evaluate the needs of their particular school, their students. And they plan together and establish a plan. And that plan is put together here. So we give schools instructional supply dollars. We give them remediation dollars. Schools that are eligible receive APN dollars, which are some federal dollars that schools can receive. I think middle and high schools primarily for after-school activities that they can provide in support of military students. And they get a Title I allocation. And then in this year, with the ESSR dollars and part of the plan that you have approved and that has been established, we have some ESSR funds that are going to them to help with additional remediation, learning loss, and those resources. All of that has been allocated to the schools. So they put together a plan based on resources that we're providing, the needs within their school buildings, of how they want to utilize these dollars. These plans are shared with leadership. There is a flow of how this information comes back through academics, federal programs, HR, in evaluation of those resources. So in this particular example, school has, from their needs, has decided they need an additional teacher. They want to support remediation in their school through an additional remediation teacher. They are adding some teacher assistance to support their teachers and their programs within their school. And they have decided on an hourly basis that they're going to provide tutorial services in different ways. And they've identified an allotment of hours that will be given to support their students, their learning, and their preparation for integrated testing and the course testing, depending on the school, elementary, middle, or high school. So a lot of planning goes in here. It is documented that they have met with their schools. They've met with their teachers. They have parent input. They have a plan for remediation and delivery of these services. And that has fed into this planning process and their plan for utilizing resources in the district. Over the past, I guess it's three years now, we've tried to focus our budgeting initiatives on tying it with our strategic priorities. And as board members, you have seen these documents, our budget business cases. So we asked our various departments to bring to the table any needs, desires, continuations of funding through this budget business case. We started by talking here a little bit about our strategic plan and that being the driving component of educational programs and then our budgeting supporting those programs. And we want to focus that on these business cases. So this is a form that we primarily use. And you'll see that in every case, we're tying that to a specific strategic priority. And these various areas within that strategic priority that are a focus of the program. There's a detailed narrative that supports the need where we are now in the district, where we would like to be. And you even see an impact statement. What would the impact be if we fund this initiative? What it will do for our students, for our districts, and for our communities? And the bottom part of that looks at the current situation. In this particular case, this is a business case for social workers. What our current situation is, 66. What we're asking for as we move forward in funding for a New Year's budget. It looks at the resources that are needed there. This helps keep the focus on the strategic plan and not on individual wishes or desires. Helps to bring together an overall focus of the district. So we talked about, as we prepare for next year's budget, we would work over the next couple of, three months as we prepare for that December timeline of the board, having strategic priorities in which they would like to share with administration that we look at and including in the budget. I wanted to share this information just to talk a little bit about the process now, some of the resources that are out there, some of the restrictions of those resources and how we continue to develop to that point. So we'll spend some time here between now and December in continued finance committee meetings to work with you, to share some other information with you about the process. But one thing that I have included in your package, if you'll look there at those last couple of pages. And as I wrap up this particular section, again, I said, "This wasn't about allocating dollars to budgets and that." But it's about the planning process that needs to go. I put this in your packet. I would like for you to take a few minutes while you're here today. This is not something that I envisioned that we're going to take up. It's not really something that we have to share out unless that's part of your plan today. But since by the December time period, we want to have some strategic initiatives. If you can take some time today and jot down some of the things you've heard today, which might be priorities of yours. Some of the things that you had maybe coming in to today that were priorities of yours. And between now and December, maybe to continue to add to that priority so as we come down to those final priorities by that December time period. All right, any questions about any of the information that I've shared here this afternoon? Or anything that I can answer? If not, if we could give them a few minutes to make some notes on their priorities, I do want you to keep those with you and let's continue to add to them as we work over the next few months to our December time period and next step in our budgeting process.
Absolutely. Do me one favor. Once you finish, let's say if you put two down today, draw a line and put today's date. The reason that today's date, awesome presentation, wow. The reason today's date is so critically important. Every time you add to it, just add your date. Sometimes something externally may affect what you're writing down internally. Good stuff. I'm going to give you five minutes on that one because that's very, very critical. And then we're getting ready to move around the room. All right. For those, a lot of times when I'm doing presentations or working with boards, and Dr. Conley already jumped on it. He gave me a great article to read. And my homework assignment this weekend is to read the article. I love articles compared to somebody giving me books. But people are asking me, "What am I reading?" So here's a book that I'm reading right now. It's The Transformative Leader. I'll leave it up here. Very good book. I'm working with the United States Federal. This is what Nathan and I were talking about. We're working with the United States federal judicial system. So these are all federal judges. So no matter your most complicated, challenging person, there are 17 across the country working with right now. It probably won't shock you. All of them fell into the category of the letter B. So can you imagine working with 17 Bs? Another book that I just finished reading is Trusted Leadership. President Jim Clements at Clemson University, this is what his leadership team is reading. And it has eight competencies. And I'll just give them to you as we prepare to go into our final phase. Listen to these eight Cs. I'll say them slowly, just in case you desire to write. Competency of the trusted leadership, they call them eight pillars. Pillar number one is consistency. If you're going to be pretty good at whatever you're doing, you're going to have to be consistent. Pillar number two, clarity. This is what's taking place with not just the president at Clemson, but the entire executive cabinet, football coaches, everybody. Number three, compassion. Interesting, right? Oh, number four is your character. Never forget, one of my mentors in education, Ms. Alfreda Cowan. She said, "Character is really who you are when you don't think anybody's watching you." See, there's somebody always watching. I'll tell you what happened last night. Don't judge, don't judge. There's not a Boston Market near me. And I saw the Boston Market last night. Don't judge. I know you're probably thinking, "He could have ate anywhere else." But remember, I had to get to the room so I could work with Marissa in Madison. Man, they had that quarter or half white chicken. I walked in, thinking that I'm ambiguous. Got my little order, I'm getting ready to walk out. This young lady behind the counter says, "Would your name happen to be Dr. Griffin?" "I'm minding my business, Greg." I'm like, "What, Charles, what?" I said, "Well, it depends on who's asking." And she said, "Three years ago, you were in a little place called Rayford, North Carolina." And she said, "You stopped through to do a family reunion talk for my family." And she said, "This may not mean a lot to you." She said, "I had just come out of rehab and you told me not to get around professional spirit snatchers." She goes in her pocket. She said, "I've been clean for the last three years based off of those words." Boy, you talking about somebody that got in his truck and broke down like a baby. I was a man in front of her though, Charles. I was like, "Appreciate you." I got in my car, and I'm like, "Yeah!" The point is, you don't know how powerful your words are. So don't talk just to talk. Talk to say... So don't talk just to talk, talk to say something. The other C, what's your contribution? Contribution. The other C is connection. The other C is your competency. Being the smartest person in the room doesn't mean you are the person that is the most gifted in the room. I would rather be liked than to be right. And there are a lot of people that wanna be right, but they aren't liked. My grandmother used to say, "You can get more Bs from honey than you can from vinegar." What in the world does that mean? And she was saying, "Son, people will tell you the truth if they think that you're a good person." And the last one is commitment. It's what they're studying right now. I'm not telling you to study it, but that's what they're studying right now. And each week for the next eight weeks, what we'll do is we'll talk about one of those competencies there. So, we're gonna break up into three groups now. I'm gonna give you a hint. You have captains. Anybody got an idea who captain number one is? I'm just curious. Anybody got an idea? It's you, Madam Chair, Miss Chisholm. You are the captain. You're the capitone. Anybody got an idea who, uh, like chair number two is? I'm just wondering. Anybody know? Stand up for a minute, stand up for a minute. This is always good. Turn this way. I just want you to see, I am not short. I just have a height deficit. All right? Chairperson number two. And guess what? Because I want the superintendent to be able to float around and float around and float around and float around. Anybody got an idea of chairperson number three? Anybody got an idea of chairperson number three? Does anybody got? Oh, I'm gonna make it difficult for you. We playing double dust. Does anybody have an idea of chair? You know, they were so good until right there. Both of them are fighting for who is not gonna be. So does anybody have an idea who chairperson number three is gonna be? Anybody got an idea? Board, watch this. So this is how I always stay in good shape. Board, who would you like to be chairperson number three? Ooh, write it down, cause I don't want nobody to think you were playing favorites. Just write who you want. Well, right now, you're losing. Write it down, write it down, write it down. You gotta write it down. Oh my goodness, it's a tie right now. It's only between the two of you. Look, both of them over there, they've never prayed before. They're speaking in tongues. Honda Toyota, Mr. B. Please don't let it be me. Oh, it's a tie right now. Oh, the tie has been broken. Oh, the tie just came back. Oh, you drinking. No, I'm joking, I'm joking, I'm joking, I'm joking. Oh my, now this is not gonna work well if it tie, well, it can't tie. Two, four. Yeah, it can tie. Oh no, this is not gonna work. Let me see what you put. Oh shoot, I knew this was gonna happen. Okay, they said make them, what's the, hold on. You gotta pick a number, one through five. This is the number, everybody, behind me. You gotta pick a number one. What's the number? You're the chairperson! This is what I did. I said, "This is the number, everybody, behind me." So, groups are real simple. I wanna break my groups up into two groups of six and one group of seven, okay? I need to have board members, two in each, two in each, two in each. I also need to make sure that you two are not in the same group. And I need to make sure that you floating around the groups, okay? And I need to make sure, Joe, that you floating around the groups too. So I just want you to float a little bit. So this is the way it's gonna look. Your group, Madam Chair, i- is gonna come right here. And we're just gonna move this stuff and this is gonna be your section, okay? The other group, Vice Chair, yours is there. And the third group, you get to go to the VIP section. You're going over there. Now you're probably wondering, what are we gonna do in these groups? This is what you're thinking right now. I know what you're thinking. You're like, "He had us ahead of schedule and now he about to mess it up." Some of you already text your grandchildren saying, "I'm gonna make your game." You already say, some of you already told your wife that the meeting is going over so you don't have to do your honey do list. I know you, Lindsay. You like, "Girl, he talking long. We ain't gonna get out of here till six o'clock." So your questions are, the board has done an excellent job. Staff has done a beautiful job. But we now need to go from information to execution. So we started out yesterday and we started talking about the great comeback. But we also talked about graduation requirements. What I need from each one of the groups of what are the top three things the staff need to consider as we prepare to give direction around the graduation requirements? In other words, this is your time to give them feedback. Remember, I told you this was gonna happen. This is your time to give them feedback on what should we consider? Now, the reason that we're mixing board and staff, because the board, you may have a question and staff, you may already have an answer. Does that make sense to everybody? So graduation requirements, now some of you all are writing like, "Oh my God, I hope I can keep up." I'll give you a hint. It's coming off of the sheet that you already have in your agenda, okay? Your second one, we talked about extracurricular activities in student organizations. Remember, we had the two principals last night that came up and spoke to us. And Dr. Mary Black stood up and she said, "This is how she did it." Let me see if I can do, can I see your glasses again? This is how she did it. I'm gonna transform real quick. You ain't got but two minutes. So all you got is two minutes. And then I think it was E.E. Smith, principal, the more he started to talk, and he was scared of you two. I don't know what you did, cause the closer you started going this way, this is what he did. I know I'm about to run out of time. I know, it was almost, he was like, exit stage left. He was about to run out of time. But what he knew is that you gave him an amount of time and you wasn't playing with him. So what are some things that we need to make sure that we get back to the, the cabinet about extracurricular activities? Is there anything that we left out? And then the third one would be, man, boy, did Joe, I mean, Joe, you by me, my favorite auxiliary person that I've met. I mean, not to blow your head up, but some of your colleagues aren't that thorough. They just aren't. I mean, you had your stuff lined up and you're ready, and then you even had a backup. Most of the time, if you know what you're doing, your backup don't know what they're doing. They don't. I didn't say a district. So now we gotta talk about, and you already did this, we gotta talk about facilities and student assignments. Those top three things. What should the staff hear from you that they can take back and execute? The fourth one, we talked about choice, programs and language. I'll give you a hint. You already did that one. But now we gotta get it fine tuned to three. Does that make sense? And then last, Mr. Locklear, first and foremost, you have a lot of courage because every presentation on the planet knows not to put the, the money behind lunch. You did an excellent job. I only caught two people doing like this. Only two, only caught two. And what else was Dr. Conley? No, I'm joking, I'm joking, I'm joking, I'm joking, I'm joking, I'm joking, I'm joking. But budget is real. You've already started that exercise to some degree. You need to talk about it. Now, we already know if you cannot write, please don't volunteer to write. What, I think you have five sheets of paper. You don't have to write the topic at the beginning. All you have to do for me is write number one. Why? Because I already know what number one is and you do too. Number one is what, everybody? All you gotta write is number one. Anybody know what number five is? Starts with a B. Good. And sometimes people say it starts with a B. Make sure you always get rid of your BS. I know people looking at me live, you wonder, what is he saying? BS stands for busy schedule. Gotcha. Gotta get rid of your BS. It was funny, Nick asked me a question earlier. He said, "Man, I've never seen those before." And what was the word you asked about? Availability. I'll close out with what that is. And it's gonna be very, very powerful. So I know what you're thinking. He's gonna give us ten minutes for these five questions. And guess what? You're absolutely positively incorrect. I'm gonna give you twenty, because here's what I know. Rushing you through something that's this serious is inactive leadership. And if I walk around and you need five more minutes, guess what I'm gonna say? "I got five on it." I'm gonna give you five more. But if the Madam Chair looked at me and she said, "Boy, it's time to go," guess what I'm saying? Y'all better speed up. So, now you're probably wondering, well, who's gonna be in which group? Ooh, this gets really good. Well, how long have you been on the board? Nineteen years. How long you been on the board? Three years. Three months? One month? Nine? Eleven? Nine? Okay. And how many? Six. So, seven. So, seven. So here's what I'd like. This is gonna be your partner right here, cause in boards, you know you need to have, in my opinion, you need to have mentors. And you need to get a mentor that's seasoned and not toxic. So you go with this group. So you, you right here, you guys are going. So you all can move over here. You can bring your chairs too. So you two are right here. Perfect. Now, Madam Chair, you and you only, you get to pick between one, two, and three. Which one of these have you worked with the least? One, two, or three? Which one have you worked with the least? Have you worked with the least out of these three leaders? One, two, or three? Uh, which one? Oh, perfect. So guess what? You get to go over here and you're up there. So guess what? You ever remember Charlie's Angels? Anybody remember that? So I'm Charlie and these are my two angels. Look at this. Angels, you are going over there. So go over there. Perfect. Ms. Black, I have a black writing utensil on this side. So you're the only person that I'm gonna say, since it's a black writing utensil, you can come over here. Now you ladies are going over there. Now you're probably wondering, well, where every, where is everybody else going? Well, remember, we got a captain. So guess who the captain, guess what's happening? Cap, you go with that group. You the captain. Now here's the good news. Captain, you don't have to do any work. I mean, you just tell me what it is. Now, Captain, which one of your, uh, executive cabinet members that you work with the least? Besides Dr. Black? Joe, guess what? Go with that group. But if they give you a hard time, just let me know. Just let me, but you get to float. So Joe, you go with that group. You're probably wondering, well, where is he gonna send the rest of us? I'm trying to look at the group and balance it out. So Joe, you go with them. Oh, this is gonna be good. Dr. Conley, if you go right here. It's better if you come with this group right here. Oh, this is gonna be good. This is gonna be good. Do you mind going with that group right there? Now remember, you guys get a chance to go in the other room, but don't leave me yet. I'm just looking at my numbers. Mr. Locklear, since you did a great job, which group do you wanna sit with? Now, I'll give you a hint. This is the boss. I'm not telling you to sit with the boss, but he is the boss. Which group do you wanna sit with? You got group A, B, group C? Go with group C. Oh, this is gonna be good right now. So I got one, two, three, four. Ladies always get to go first. Other than your boss, which group do you wanna sit with? This? All right, so you're going over there. Oh my goodness. Now I'm gonna say you for last, cause we're gonna call your brother. Um, so where would you like to go? Where would you like to go, Ruben? You go over there. So if you don't mind, if you go with that group right there. And here's the advantage. Now, everybody's about to hate on you. Everybody is. You can go wherever the heck you want, cause you got a person that looks like you. So you get to pick whichever group you wanna go to. You got your questions. You got twenty minutes. Twenty minutes. Let's go. You guys can go over there. Make sure I didn't leave anybody out. I got everybody. Good. Perfect. Perfect, perfect, perfect. All right, let's see what they're doing over here. Red twenty-eight. Red twenty-eight. Red twenty-eight. It's the one that would fit. If you're wondering what the stickies are for, my great idea is they're for brainstorming. So if you're wondering what the stickies are for, the stickies are for brainstorming before you begin to write there, okay? The stickies are for brainstorming before you begin to write. The stickies. Well, I guess this group's highly intellectual. For, yeah, yeah. You know what? This is a very... The superintendent said, "Calm down, group over there." Joking. Joking.
I'm not gonna do that.
Well, you know, people are supposed to be really... Do you know what I'm saying? I mean, still getting more attention. I was like that. You're like, uh, can't hold round, but you know. Uh, I asked her, and I had, so it was a lot of work. They got, they, I mean, it's a part of it. They can go back and, um...
Bill. Bill.
Oh, that.
Yes, very good. Right, right, right.
Then the other way. Little, little, little poor.
Yeah, I'm glad.
Yeah.
Why is that?
Although, oh. They're calling in. Boo.
He's, he's...
Yeah, and it's, uh, it's a bad show. I don't know. I have a basic... The bathroom. So I'm gonna sort of... He got... Got a big barrel. For, 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 everybody has a little transfer, I said, in some law. Well, we work.
If you skip somebody, you're doesn't... About where you build with the... Build a plant. Imagine there's a core, like, more built, correct?
So they went through.
Right, it's, oh, that's, that's, that's not, not work there. Yeah, you have to do them. But they're not, you know, not, you know, put out, stay on, I guess. That's, and the exact, or something. You can't, with you. You have, you have, you have, you have.
And I have to tell them.
Again, state, uh, state, uh, choice. Yes, state.
Well, here's the good news. You have been given overtime. We are in overtime, ladies and gentlemen. So you have an extra five minutes. We are in overtime. Because if I stopped what's going on with this group over here, they would kill me. Two minutes. Two minutes. Oh, oh, look who's coming back, Charlie and the angels and Joe just became Charlie. Joe, if you put that right where the flower is. So what I'd like for you to do, each group, go ahead and get up and walk and see what the other groups have written. Look and see what the other groups has written. Now, I'm not saying any group is better than the other, but one group was able to write everything on one piece of paper. They said they were the GT group. They might not have had a budget, so they were using one piece of paper. Look and see what others have written. Also, once again, I have got to thank this fantastic technology staff. Give them a big round of applause as you are looking, they are rock stars. Go ahead and judge each other, look around the room, some people wrote in 2.1 font. Some people didn't care about the budget and wrote it in five pieces of paper. And you know who my frugal, fantastic group is, I'm not calling any names, but they wrote the GT group. If you're online and wondering what's occurring, each group took one question from all five questions. And they were able to give us comments on what they think should be next from the board and staff's perspective. And then what will occur after this is this will go back to the executive cabinet. The executive cabinet then will delineate between their support team members and come up with a plan that can be presented back to the board. This will take place with Dr. Collin and his team, and it helps us out there. Oh, camera, I just noticed you over here, sorry. Dr. Collin, he was smooth how he did it, he didn't say this, but he said, "You poor fool, the camera's over there, I'm looking over there." So, if you're wondering what's taking place, we're actually now allowing each team to see, like I'm too close. We're allowing each team to see what each group wrote. We have five different subject areas, and in these five different subject areas, each group now has a chance to see what each area has written. This will now go back to Dr. Collin and his team. As it goes back to his team, they may put it in a perspective, and it goes back to other team members. Then they'll come back with a plan of action to the board, and these will be some of the best practices that we'll take from our 2021-2022 retreats. Everybody got a chance to look and see, see and look? Now, what I would do if I were you, I would take a picture of what's written. Also, if you really want to become strategic, what I did is I took a picture of each group. So I know my red group was over here, so I took a selfie with that group. I knew my green group was over there and I took a picture with that group. I did. And then, to be honest, because I knew I might forget, the black group, if I don't remember who was in the group, I know Dr. Black was in the group, that's why I gave her the pen. You've got to do what it works for you to remember how you got what you got. Because remember, next week I'll be on to something else, and so will you. However, I still know where my teams were at, does that make sense to everybody? Perfect. Now, here's what I've seen teams also do, people will say, "Well, I'll just type it and send it out to everybody." That's fine, but that still is not independent ownership. When you have your own picture, I am not dependent upon you, I'm independent upon me. Yes, that's what I wanted to point out. So Nick, you want to ask your question again that you asked during the break as I prepare to get us to the next level?
Explain the importance of availability.
Explain the importance of availability as one of the characteristics of a high-performing team.
So one of the things that I learned when I was working with NASCAR, and I know some of you just judged me right then, you and NASCAR, I know, I know. The most important person on the team in the pit, anybody know who it was, and I learned this from NASCAR, anybody got an idea? The most important person on the team in the pit, anybody know? Tire changer, anybody got any other ideas? Spotter, any other ideas? Crew chief, this is what their philosophy is, availability. Everybody's important on that team and no one is less or more important than the other. Because the guy or lady that hands the drink in keeps you hydrated. The guy or lady that does the one pump on the jack, because you get one pump to get the car up. You're taking that tire off and then as a team, you got 10 to 12 seconds. The 10 seconds are the winners, the 12 seconds normally are not with the same team the next year. 10 to 12 seconds, that's all you have. So if I got an issue with you about availability, in between one pit stop to the next, they literally have a staff meeting that talks about, "You were late, you were slow," or, this is the one I love. Man, good stuff, way to help me out, I'm glad that you saw it. Man, the spotter told us that we didn't have to change those tires. See, if we start looking at our availability as if we're on a NASCAR crew pit team, your time will be more efficient. Our ability to agree or disagree, because they don't really have time to disagree with 10 to 12 seconds. Availability becomes that where if you see that he's down, you have to be available even though it's not in your particular area. Yeah, I know he's at large, but if you're in a six or a one or a four, one is just as important than four and at large is just as important as three. So availability becomes being sensitive enough to know where you might be needed and not asked. Now, you've got to understand that needed and not asked does not mean you're welcome yet, oh, this is about to be good. Needed and not asked does not mean you're welcome. So before you become available to go support, you've got to show yourself approved to be welcoming. And if you're not welcoming, why can we work or not work together? You had a couple people, one person had to leave and a couple people that weren't here today. There's nothing wrong with individuals not being here, but we got to bring them up to speed and they have to independently get up to speed. We got to bring them up to speed and they have to independently get up to speed. Once they get up to speed independently or with your support, you still got to keep moving. There was never going to be a date that was probably going to work with everybody, it just wasn't going to happen. But within that, you cannot, in my biased opinion, go back and do this 2.0 and you did 1.0 today. You'll keep coming back and never go forward. Oh, that was good. You'll keep coming back and never go forward. So whatever you gained from today, it was critical. I know you saw on the agenda like I saw on the agenda, you said, "Let's talk about effective communication." You were probably thinking I was going to give the seven slides like effective communication, right? Nope. What I did is I broke you into those groups because you were already effectively communicating. I love how you were, watch this now, strategic in keeping us on time, but you were not in any way negative. I love how this group, because there's always that one, sometimes it's the C, I love how this group constantly kept moving. I got a question, were you the one that were putting the, putting the, watch this leaders, who told you to do it? Nobody, availability. I'm asking, Rupert, who told you? Who gave you the audacity to write? Isn't it amazing that we can work better together when we act like adults? I'm just asking. Finally get a chance to pick her. Who told Ms. Black to write, did you tell her to write? She was asked to write. Who was the bully that told her to write? Who was it, tell all them. Yes, you do. But watch this, sometimes when you know you have a gift and a skill, haul them in and pull them in. You've got some talented people that are in the community and on your teams, and they're sitting on the sidelines because they're mad, they're misunderstood, and they don't know where we're going. You did some work today, leaders, you cannot let this go. Now, I do have a question about you, this was real good, this is what you looked like, he was like, "Shoot, we gonna be the best." He was like this. What got you to that point that you just started, watch this, guiding but not controlling, oh, that's a tweetable moment. How did you guide, because you know Susan wasn't going to let you control it, you do know that, right? But how did you guide but not control it, I'm just curious? She said it's her management staff, she did it so good, she was not consciously aware, nor could she explain how she did it, but here's the bigger question. Why did you all let her do it? I noticed that Mr. Whitley, and if you all have not figured out, I'm telling you, as a rock star, you got to figure out who he is, he hiding from you guys. He sit there and he was like, "Well, maybe we might want to consider this," and then he sit back. I think that's an excellent idea, and through my experience, this was something you may want to consider. Do we need to put this before that, because if we don't have this, we might not have that. He had power but did not have a nasty tone, teach cancel. See, sometime loud does not mean right, loud will give you laryngitis. See, everybody figured it out today, but whether you're listening or whether you're in here, don't figure it out today and play and lose it when we walk out of here and can't play tomorrow. Now, I'm be honest, I'm tired as all I know what, sweat running down my leg, I've been working, because I've been writing over here, trying to do this, talking to, um, look, I had seven meetings, Doc, listen, listen, listen. Dr. Norman has given me, we got seven, we had seven meetings while I was doing this today. Today, she was like, "Come over here, what about this, what about that, what about this?" And then, I got to be honest, I forgot something. She was so quick and you never knew it, I forgot to ask for the white sheets of paper. I don't know how she did it, but she got them in here. I say all that to say that it has been a pleasure. Please, leaders. I go a lot of places, and I'm putting this on record, so if it goes on Bookface, Facebook, any book, some of you've been around a minute, MySpace. Oh, you remember MySpace, Dr. Collin, Dr. Collin, what is MySpace, you know what MySpace is. But all jokes aside, let's do what's right for children. If we're really going to come back, maybe after today, maybe you're already back. Cumberland County Schools, maybe you're back. There's some stuff that we're not going to be able to control, some stuff we've never seen before. But what she did during dinner and what she did during lunch, see how I did it in an inclusive manner, I believe it still works. As you do those things and do what's right for children, the right things come out. So typically how I end, I normally start with a person that helps us out, and you guys can change it. But I normally start with Dr. Wilson Norman, and then obviously because it's a board retreat, I go to then the superintendent, and then I normally close out with the board chairperson. But the last thing I want to say, and it could be other people that need to speak, this document right here one of the best manuscripts that I've ever seen in a school board retreat, ever. So to you, my friend, thank you. You would give her a mic, him a mic, anything you have to close, you got a mic coming your way, anything that you have to close, that was funny though. I was sitting here talking my heart out to you and Dr. Collin came over, he said, "The microphone of the cameras right there." He did it nice, he didn't embarrass me. Anything you have to close out with?
I don't, I just want to say thank you to the numerous people that helped put together the manuscript and organize today's event. So, Dr. Griffin is saying my name, but there were lots of elves behind the scenes who helped make the last two days possible. Some of them are here, back there, and some of them are back at the offices, but thank you for their extra work in making our day successful.
Again, thank you to all the staff that have been involved, trying to retreat, building up to the retreat, during the retreat, to make it successful. To the more, thank you for your sacrifice of time to be here for a day and a half, set aside time to engage with us, to give us strategic guidance and strategic direction. I firmly believe that it is this type of work and this type of time commitment that is going to really move us forward. So, thank you to the more, thank you to the cabinet and all the presenters and Dr. Griffin. I first heard you in Greensboro, Superintendent's office, and I told Dr. Wilson Norman then, I said, "I don't know, when we have the next more retreat, well, we have to get that down." And then I came back and I told the cabinet about you, and Lindsey Whitney said, "I already know him." So, you're right, Lindsey, he was, let's give Dr. Griffin a hand.
On behalf of the total school system, we would like to thank all of our staff. We would like to thank all of our staff for all the hard work that it put into this retreat before and during this retreat, and the wonderful jobs that you will be doing after the retreat. We would like to thank Mr., I'm terrible with names.
Griffin.
Griffin, Mr. Griffin, we enjoyed you, let's all give him a big hand. I'd like to wish for everyone a very safe and pleasant weekend, enjoy yourselves, be safe, and be back to work on Monday. Seriously, thank you all, and God bless each one of you.
The board chair, say it all. Now, I have been, so this is good but bad, so I've been given two sets of instructions. All of us that work for the district, that's the boss, but then all of us that work for the board, that's the boss. So both of the bosses said that this person needs to speak, so this is how I don't get in trouble.
Well, when you go forth, everything's been said, but again, I just want to reiterate, thank you all for the work in advance, but more importantly, thank you for the work going forward that we're going to do. but more importantly, thank you for the work going forward that we're going to do. I just challenge everybody that can carry this, our spirit of cooperation and working together forward for the children. So just thank you in advance for your spirit and have a good weekend.
What's that? So two things you have to do. One, you got to close your meeting, okay? And two, I want to get a picture with everybody. And three, some of you all have been asking about the books. Let me talk to Dr. Collin and see if it's something the district wants to do, and it'll be a different rate instead of you just saying, "Well, let me get a book." So let me, if you give me that little bit of grace, I can do that. So, but you do have to close your meeting, and then, and you already know this, but I do want to get a photo with everybody, so.
A second. Raise your hand. It's unanimous.
All right, let's take a photo.